Eileen, good evening. Can you please open the meeting?
Sure. Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting for Monday, July 22, 2024. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 11, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on December 11, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on December 11, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for a possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider when rendering their decision, and the decorum must be appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Orozco is excused. Mr. Stanton is absent. Mr. Ryan?
Present.
Ms. Scottson?
Present.
And Chairman Seiya?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Okay, will everybody please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Andy, can you please swear on the professionals?
We swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God.
I do.
Please state your names to the record.
Charles Cunliffe.
Christine Bell.
Shari Spiro.
Your professionals are swearing.
Thank you, sir. Item five, approval of minutes, regular meeting, June 10, 2024. Eligible voters: Barillo, Orozco, Ryan, Scottson, and Seiya. Do we have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
I second that.
Barillo, Ryan, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Eileen, any vouchers?
I have no vouchers.
Do we have any correspondence?
The only correspondence was an email I mailed to all the members the other day. It was a follow-up to Mr. Cunliffe's email regarding stormwater training. All board members need to watch the video and then just send me a quick email back that you're finished with the training so we can keep it for our records.
Great, I took that training today.
Yes, you did. I got your email.
Thank you.
So did Mr. Ryan.
Very nice.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Resolutions. There are no resolutions before the board, so what we have is applications before the board. We're going to start off with case number BA 10-17 SPA-2, Town Homes of Eagle Oaks.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, professionals.
This is an extension of time.
That is correct.
And this is application of Town Homes at Eagle Oaks LLC as applicant and the Town Houses at Eagle Oaks LLC and Winsome Property Holdings LLC as owner seeking two one-year extensions of time on approvals more localized than a resolution on June 10, 2019, on premises known as Block 218, lots 20.12 through 20.41, Cranberry Road.
That is correct. My name is Bob McGowan. I'm the attorney representing the applicant, and the chairman has stated what we are here for, and that's for the two one-year extensions so we can finally file the condo plan, which has bounced around over that time.
Okay. Christine?
Yes.
Two year, one-year extensions based on 2019?
Paul, I had, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I had reviewed this request from a legal perspective, and with the Permit Extension Act that was passed during, as a result of COVID.
Yes.
That it is a, within the board's discretion to grant, it is legal within the board's discretion to grant the request.
Okay, so the two one-years would take us out to when then, sir?
That's a good question. Mr. McGowan, that I leave to the applicant. It's not too far off.
It's four, there's a 14-month gap because of the state extension for COVID. So from the date that we originally approved, add another, you have two years, then you got to add 14 months. I think it's like September, October. Andy and I had talked about it, but I didn't actually write it down. But it would be, you know, two extensions beyond the 14 months after the two years is what it is, and we'll figure that out in the resolution.
Your letter doesn't, your letter doesn't indicate the dates, Bob.
Right, I, that was because we had discussed it, and I think Hughes said it was October. I counted it to September something, and I didn't want to confuse it in the letter, quite frankly.
August of '22 would be 14 months. So August of '24 would be two more years. Originally, it was June of '19, which brings you to '21.
That is correct.
Another year, which 12 months brings you to '22. Two more months make it 14 months, is August of '22, so it's August 10 of 2024 would be.
Eileen, your email on this originally indicated August, I mean, not August, October?
October.
Of this year.
Of this year, that's correct.
Yeah. With your analysis, the date in the board administrator's email indicates...
So, and just to give the board some context on this, right? So this property has a long history, going years ago, it was all single-family dwellings on a road that was to be dedicated to the township. They've been back to the board a couple of times. The road's since reverted back to a private right-of-way, and then they came back to amend some of the buildings to make them townhomes, to make a COA. So really, it's just the extension to actually file the map to form the COA, right?
That is correct. That is correct.
So they, it's my understanding that they addressed everything on my end, and then also with the Township Engineering Department, this is the last step. So it's an extension to file the map.
That is correct. I mean, there are 10 resident homeowners in place now. We're looking to complete the development.
So you're looking for?
It would be, Mr. Chairman, until October 7, 2024. That would be the two-year extension.
And we're ready to file the map now, so that's more than adequate.
You are. Okay, September, October 7th, October 7th is what we said, yes. 2024. Okay, well, that's what he needs. Andy, do we need to open public on extension time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to open the bubble.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eileen?
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public. If anyone has any questions or comments regarding this application, please step forward. You will be required to give your name and address and be sworn in.
Not seeing any? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Eileen?
At this time, the hearing is closed to the public.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Three-month extension, basically, four-month, actually. June, July, August, September, October.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to go ahead and grant that extension.
To October 7, 2024?
October 27, 2024, for Eagle Oaks Town Homes.
It's seven.
What did I say?
Twenty-seven.
Oh, wow, there you go. I'm going to give you another 20 days, I'm sorry. October 7.
You're very lenient tonight.
I second the motion to extend it to 10/7/2024.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. We got a motion and a second. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Good night.
Okay. Case number BA 19-23 SP, Yeshiva Emek Hattara Inc. This is a type use. Type is a use variance, preliminary, and final major site plan and major subdivision. Description: Application of Yeshiva's Emek Hattara Inc. as applicant seeking use variant, preliminary, and final major site plan and major subdivision approval to remove all existing structures from lots 22 and 23.01 and construct a two-story, 23,253-square-foot school building with a basement located predominantly on lot 22, but also partially on lots 23 and 23.01. The existing one-story educational facility located on lot 23 is to remain, and a vertical addition is proposed over the, over the proposed gymnasium on premises known as Block 69, Lot 15, 22, 23, and 2301, 395 Kent Road. This application was partially heard on March 25, 2024, when it was carried to July 8, 2024, with no further notice. After some testimony on July 8, the application was carried to tonight, July 22, 2024, with no further notice. Expiration date is August 31, 2024. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Merton, Orozco, Scottson, and Seiya.
And Mr. Ryan has certified, he read the transcript today, so he's...
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Mr. Pape?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals, and public. Just before we begin, am I correct that the seven board members that are sitting here this evening are fully qualified?
Yes, they are.
As you read into the record by the chairman, this is the third presentation of the application to the board, the first one in March, the second one two weeks ago, and this is our third. There are three witnesses that I intend to call for direct presentation to the board. I believe that they'll be efficient in their presentation to the board. Scott Kennel is our traffic expert, and Scott does have a time constraint, so I intend to call him as the first witness, and also ask that his examination take place after he testifies. Louis Zugner is the design engineer, his testimony will follow. Mr. Zugner's testimony was substantially placed on the record in March. This evening, he's going to address open questions and just do an executive summary of the site plan and the subdivision. And Christine Cuffone is our professional planner. All of the witnesses who previously testified are with us. The architect, Ms. Rupp, has joined us. Rabbi Weinberger is here, Jack Mandelbaum is here. So if there are questions of any of those individuals, they remain with us.
Thank you, Mr. Pape. Mr. Pape, the traffic engineer, did he also testify at this, during the preliminary?
He did not testify on this application. He testified about four years ago.
The first time in the preliminary, right?
It was a use variance.
Yes.
So with your permission, we'll have Mr. Kennel, and I'll ask if you want his credentials on the record again, they are part of the record, and then we'll go right to his substantive presentation.
He been, he wasn't sworn before?
I don't, I'm not remembering clearly if he was sworn. I know that he's been part of a lot of meetings.
Let's do it again.
Let's swear him in.
You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell your last.
Yes, Scott Kennel, K-E-N-N-E-L, with McDonough and Ray Associates, located in Manasquon.
And Mr. Chair, Mr. Kennel has testified before this board on many occasions, and qualified as a traffic expert. May I ask that you accept him in that capacity?
May accept him, yes, sir.
Mr. Kennel, I know that you have been part of this project since its beginning. I'm going to ask if you could take us through the following. One, if you could describe the onsite circulation and confirm the fire department's review of that onsite circulation. Two, if you could identify the, how a bus navigates the property. Three, if you could describe the adequacy of the parking. Then I look to you if there's anything further that you believe the board should hear with regard to this application.
Thank you. Yeah, firstly, just briefly talk much on the traffic study that we did for this current application. In conjunction with it, we conducted new traffic counts in May of 2023. So we did the traffic counts in the morning, afternoon, and also Friday midday, because that's a time period that the students are dismissed ahead of the Sabbath, so. And in doing those traffic counts, we found that the volumes are slightly higher than what we'd done previously, and that is basically because Bethel Church Road was closed. So as I'm sure you all are familiar, during that time period, there's a lot of diversions and adjustments in traffic patterns. But we utilized those higher traffic counts in doing our analysis, just to be conservative. When we had conducted the traffic counts, there were 150 students on campus or on the site at the time. So to reflect the maximum enrollment of 180 students, we adjusted the traffic volumes that were recorded back in May of 2023 to represent 180 students. And in doing that, we then analyzed the site driveway at Kent Road and found that the intersection or the site driveway would operate at good levels of service, a level of service B, B as in boy in the morning, C in the afternoon, a weekday afternoon, and then C for the Friday dismissal period. And that's with the higher traffic counts as a result of the road closure on Bethel Church Road. So from a operational standpoint, my testimony is that the driveway operates safely and efficiently, and with its design as a boulevard-type driveway can function very well. And as I testified previously, with the site frontage improvements, it's also going to enhance the site distance looking both north and south with the modified widening along the site frontage. So again, when this project is completed, the site access will have a better design and will operate safely and efficiently. As far as the onsite circulation, Mr. Zugner had testified earlier to the plan, that is,
Exhibit 833.
Thank you.
Thank you. Exhibit 833, where we've designed this to accommodate the buses that'll be serving the school, where they will enter off of Kent Road and circulate in a counterclockwise pattern to drop the students in front of the new building where the Port of Cacher is. There's more than adequate stacking and storage to accommodate the buses that'll service this site. And as a result, the bus has been able to navigate this site efficiently. Same is true with emergency vehicles, and this has been reviewed by the Fire Bureau and found to be designed in a proper manner to safely and efficiently serve the site. The one last point I'll discuss is the parking. Where 28 parking spaces were required, we're providing 39 parking spaces. We also have overflow parking, which is probably not warranted, given the, when I prepared the report in 2023, at that time, they were going to have graduation on, graduations on-site, that is now going to be off-site. So the parking demand for event type of, for those type of events will not be necessary. So the 39 paid parking spaces, in my opinion, would be more than adequate to serve the site.
Board may recall that there was testimony that there were previously three types of special events that occurred on the campus. There was the award ceremony, there was graduation, and there was also parent-teacher conferences. Parent-teacher conferences remain, but they're scheduled and do not create a burden on the parking facility. The other two events are no longer on campus, they are off-campus, and that arrangement's in place. I have nothing further, Mr. Kennel, in the form of directives available to the board and your professionals.
Board members, any questions?
More parking on grass? I think that was some, I think there was testimony along the line somewhere, there was parking on grass possibly?
There are 29 overflow parking spaces that would be accommodated beyond the 39, correct? So it's, it's still part of the plan, but the likelihood that it'd have to be utilized is very unlikely.
Where, where would they be?
As you recall, they're on the, they're beyond the eastery side of the parking field, closest to the existing building. So it's that bank of parking that's along, closest to the existing building that'll be refurbished.
Not with a septic system.
So I'll look at Exhibit 833, along here, along the eastery side of the parking field, and then on the opposite side, the dark gray spaces represent the 29 additional spaces.
I see it now, okay.
Testimony that that's a safeguard, but not one that you anticipate they'll require?
Correct.
Okay, well, then, we're not going to, nothing's going to be done on the road then? Any parking? So that's out of the, do we have no parking signs out there? I recall.
We're comfortable with any traffic control signs that you'd like, including no parking along the road.
Yeah, I think, I think for that road, I think it would be a good idea. It's not going to be.
I think that was a condition of the prior approval.
Yeah, that's why, okay.
Correct.
Mr. Mertens, they are widening the shoulder along Kent Road on their side of the road, so I think that is prudent, and I think that came up the last time. Ultimately, any signage is put in a public right-of-way is subject to the town's approval, so, you know, they'll have to just show the plan, and it'll get the approval from PD and the engineer. I just want to add too, so, Mr. Kennel, the circulation that's being shown now is largely the same as what was presented to the board at the time of the use variance application, right?
That's correct.
And the enrollment that's being proposed now is 180 students versus what was under the prior approval?
340, 345, yes.
So generally speaking, less students is less buses and less trips to the site?
That's correct.
So the onsite loading and offloading for the bus areas, in your opinion, still adequate for the site?
That's correct.
And then just globally, right? 180 students versus 340. I think this board acted previously in the positive that this site could accommodate the use. Now it's coming back, albeit on a more limited basis, so I take no exception to any Mr. Kennel's testimony from a traffic perspective.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, Mr. Pape. We'll open it to public later, okay?
If you could open on him at this time, because he does have other appointments this evening.
I'll make a motion to open the...
Thank you.
Do we have a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Eileen, opening public for the traffic engineer only.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public who have questions or comments on, for the traffic engineer only. Anyone who has any, please step forward, be prepared to give your name and address, and be sworn in.
Not seeing any? All in favor? All right, we're closing.
Thank you.
Thank you for the accommodations.
Got it.
Our second witness is Louis Zugner. Louis is the professional engineer responsible for the plans. He did testify extensively in March. He was sworn off. So remind him his credentials are on the record.
Yes, he did raise a few eyebrows when he testified in March.
Do you think you can keep the eyebrows down tonight?
So, the building has shrunk. We're interested in the septic field?
Yes.
And everything else that you are going to put on the record that contradicts what you first put on the record back in March?
Clarify. Clarify.
Okay.
So, Mr. Zugner is a professional engineer, his credentials were placed before the board, and his expertise was accepted. I think that a very good place to begin would be right to talking about septic systems. So when we were talking about septic systems the last time, we did not have an approval. We now have a design and an approval. And we also had schematics identifying where the septic would be placed. We now have a fully-designed septic. We also did not have all the information about the septic systems that will be abandoned. There are a number to be abandoned. Not to steal your thunder, please take us through those points, Louis. So, good evening. First thing that I would note, and we'll go through this from the beginning. The existing site does have four septic fields. We talked about that last time, the two houses and two for the existing building, all of which are being eliminated. So it'll be one new modern septic field, and that field is now defined on the plan, the grading around it's defined. It does not impact any buffer or other areas. It's, as you can see on Exhibit 83, the open green area in the upper left of the property is the location, right there.
And Mr. Pape, is that the area that you also purchased, the applicant purchased to expand?
The applicant purchased the property behind the existing building, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, for the, for the setback.
The long strip of that.
Yes.
I would note also on the septic system, we do have Board of Health approval, and Board of Health approval is the outside agency that governs the design of the system. Any other conditions that might come up through Board of Health or through Construction Department, we would have to meet those as well. But we do have their approval on the field. And that is sized and designed to accommodate 180 students plus faculty or staff in the building. With your permission, we'll go to another topic, or we should stay here?
Charlie, so when we pull out the old ones, we're going to clean fill, or?
Yeah, so obviously, that's under the jurisdiction of Board of Health, but they make sure that any septic systems are abandoned in accordance with all applicable regulations. I do want to point out, and Mr. Zugner, correct me if I'm wrong, so, obviously, you have the, is it the Matitikonk on the south end here, and there's Floodhouser and all that kind of stuff? So there is wetlands to the south of the site. The applicant, I think, put testimony on the record last time, they're in the process. They've submitted their LOI for a TAW. Their driveway largely is in the same footprint of what was already existing out there. Nevertheless, they are expanding it a little bit, so they're getting their approvals for that. There is a septic system, I believe, on the south side of that existing school building, right?
That is correct, yes.
So that's being removed?
And that's being removed?
From the environmentally regulated area?
Correct, that area will be essentially with DEP reestablished as within part of the transition areas.
Thank you.
So I just want to touch on the new septic, right? So I know there's, Mr. Zugner said they have an approval for a new septic system, right? I would just ask that the Board of Health give final sign-off, that it be for the new lot designation. The prior sign-off might be for the existing structure as it is, lot, you know, the standalone lot designation. They'll make determination that the flows are acceptable and everything, it's under their jurisdiction. And I just want to note for the record, a key component of that is, right, they said at the last hearing, no food prep in the kitchen, no classroom space in the existing building that's to be converted to the gymnasium and wreck and things like that. I just want to cite that again for the record, that plays into the septic design, so.
Yes, they said, they're just going to heat the food that comes in.
Yes, so they, I think they put a representation similar to the first time when they were here for the use, that it's all prepared off-site, and it's just served on the site from the kitchen and cafeteria.
Thank you, Charlie. Mr. Pape?
Sure, all of, all of Mr. Cunliffe's comments are accurate, and all of his recollections are ours. Every representation that he just remembered, we offer to you again this evening. I'd like to make just one point. You pointed out that we, our driveway is getting a little bit wider. You know, there's a new fire chief in the past year, and the new fire chief took a look at what the old fire chief did and said, "I think I can make it two feet better," and asked us to widen the boulevard two additional feet, and Louis found some room to do it. So that's why there's going to be an amendment to the TAW approval from DEP to accommodate that. I think a very important point is landscaping and buffers. If we could go right to landscaping and buffers. I know that we spent time, your office spent considerable time with Shari Spiro to make certain that we understood her requirements, and also to make up for the deficiencies in the plan that was presented in March. If you could take us through where we are. Certainly, and as Mr. Pape said, recognize that the original plan did not meet your expectations. My office spent time with Ms. Spiro, which was very helpful. A couple of key elements, there are a number of hickory trees on the site, and as we've been directed, not every single one, but a number of them can be preserved, and they will be. Throughout the landscaping plan, we've added significant density in terms of numbers of plantings, and look to make those species, to the maximum extent possible, deer-resistant. There's no deer-proof, but deer-resistant. In a portion of the property near Kent Road, there are some select non-native species that are being removed, and that's, again, your professionals' direction. Where we are moving, removing trees, there's the opportunity to include a three-foot-tall berm, which then new landscaping would go on top of, so that's added element to the
which then new landscaping would go on top of, so that's added element to the landscape plan. And I believe we didn't touch on this in the last instance. Uh, in reviewing the Woodlands Management Plan, there are nine additional trees, even from this plan, that still need to be added to make that compensation whole.
One last point. When we were before the board, there was a note brought to our attention by board members and the board professionals, that the northern side of the new building had skimpy landscaping, inadequate and skimpy landscaping, I think were the words that were used. If you could confirm that that's an area that your firm has worked with Sharie, so that that condition no longer exists?
Yes, that has happened, and not just in that location, but throughout the landscape plan.
Rather than go into it in any greater detail, may I ask if Ms. Spiro could comment and advise whether she is satisfied with the work that Mr. Zugner has done?
Yes, I had multiple calls with their office, and we went through everything that I had commented on. Um, so their landscape architect, you know, did what I asked for, and I think the buffering is much improved.
And you have nine trees that you gotta spot somewhere.
I'm sure we could either fit them in, or I'm sure we'll find a home.
Mr. Zugner did go through grading and drainage with, in March. I'm gonna ask just, have you conferred with Mr. Kennel, and are you and Mr. Kennel? I'll, we'll ask, or we'll ask Mr. Kennel, but I'll, I'll ask you, and you and Mr. Kennel in agreement that you understand what he is requiring? You can and will satisfy his outstanding grading and drainage?
Yes, as we noted previously, uh, it's three new basins that meet the new rules. Those rules have changed since we were here for the use variance. Uh, and there are a couple of open conditions, but we know we can satisfy your engineer.
So Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair, no, they're, they're close, and I think Mr. Zugner, uh, is accurately summarizing it. So when they were here previously, as part of the use variance, they did a whole detailed stormwater design as part of that. The rules have subsequently changed. There's more enhanced standards with green infrastructure and things like that. Um, you know, they're still working through some, crossing the Ts, dotting the Is on the stormwater design. If I didn't feel that they were close enough that they could address this as like a compliance issue, you know, we wouldn't be here right now, so.
Okay.
And then just to clarify, right, so, all the site runoff, existing in the existing condition, goes to an onsite stormwater basin, and then discharges to existing outfalls to the Matitikonk to the south. All their site runoff is being captured, attenuated with basins, and then is still going to those same points. So it's not like we're creating a new outfall, or all this water is running down the driveway to Kent Road. It's all captured and then discharged to an existing discharge point.
So there'll be no velocity increase or anything to that sense?
You know, it's a site plan over 5,000 square feet, so they also have to get their soils approval if they haven't already gotten that, so. And they typically will review that for velocity and like...
And we have an operations and maintenance manual that will be reviewed by, by Charlie. It'll then be recorded as a restrictive covenant that'll run with the land in perpetuity, removing any burden from the township, giving the township the right to police it if they choose, but removing any burden of maintenance from the township and imposing on the property owner in perpetuity.
Thank you.
We have a subdivision, and the neighbor that is located to the east of us has made available some of their land that we are looking to incorporate. I think we'll just take a moment to have Louis describe that area and its dimensions that are... It's essentially a subdivision that is a lot line adjustment between two consenting property owners. Louis, if you could describe it.
This is relatively simple. The, the site was always three lots, uh, lots 22, 23, and 2301, which were to be merged. Uh, and what's new here is, you can see with the dash line to the top of Exhibit A3, this was, uh, an additional 20 feet in terms of depth. It's a total of 8,997 square feet, so this is, um, significant in the sense that it creates the full 50 feet from the existing building. And we had relief for that in the prior use variance application. Uh, this creates the full 50 feet. And then, uh, there would be, on the adjoining lot, some additional plantings to make sure that that was a fully landscaped 50 feet.
So, and Mr. Zugner, the current version of the landscaping plan will be revised, if needed, to show those additional plantings in that expanded area?
Yes, it will.
Okay, and just to give the board some refresher on this, so, uh, when we were previously, when they were previously before the board, there was a lot of discussion about the existing building, and there being a gymnasium, and the height of the structure needed to be raised by a foot or, you know, two or three feet, something to that effect. Um, the board didn't really, wasn't in love with that because of the lack of the full 50-foot buffer. Now they're acquiring the property to plant that, to get that 50-foot buffer, so they can raise... And to clarify, it's not the entirety of the building, Mr. Pape, right? It's just the southern part where the gym's proposed?
Just above the basketball court.
But they're providing the buffer along the entirety of that common property line?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I have no further direct examination of Louis Zugner. He's available to you now or later in the evening?
We certainly put Mr. Zugner through the wringer, huh? Yes.
They did.
Any questions for the, uh, the engineer?
The, um, so that piece of land, that east piece of land we were just talking about, you said that's an agreement with that property owner, or do they now own the property?
We can't own it until this board allows the line to be adjusted. Can't, can't buy property without having a lot line adjustment. We're under contract to purchase it.
Okay.
That property owner joined our application by their signature consenting to us being here.
So, so the applicant is going to own that piece of land at some point?
Yes, sir. And it'll all become part of the campus.
Okay. Um, as far as the septic, and I come from New York City, so nobody's really on septic, and I have very little, little knowledge of septic. The Monmouth County Board of Health, um, approved you for 180 students plus faculty. What is, what is the capacity, the total capacity, like, um, is there an outer limit to septics? Can it do more than 180 plus, was it 15, 20 faculty?
If you had a system that exceeded treatment of 2,000 gallons per day, if the system treated greater than 2,000 gallons per day, there is a complex set of approvals that you have to go to the DEP to secure. We did not go to the DEP for those. We designed the septic system as 2,000 gallons per day or less. And the 2,000 gallons per day or less matches the student population and the staff.
What, if, if you would, um, what happens if you go beyond that 2,000? Maybe not all the time, but maybe it just happens, like, what is the outcome? Like, what happens? Does the septic system fail? Does it, like, what happens? If you go past that 2,000 gallons a day?
The answer's in some ways a little bit more complex than that. So, the 2,000 gallons per day in the design is based on the proposed use. There wouldn't be a monitoring of the flow from the building. In that sense, the monitoring would be in the use of the building, the number of students. A septic system based on soil conditions, uh, here, would not fail the moment it exceeded 2,000 gallons per day. Any system could fail for different conditions or different reasons down the line, but there are remedies to a system that fails also, repairs.
There's, there's state laws that require the system to be serviced no less often than once every two years. Most people who have a septic system that depend on it like this would have an annual contract where the system is pumped, dry, flushed with clean water, pumped, dry again. And just, that's, that's how the septic system's health is maintained.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
Yeah. I have a follow-up question or two to the septic system. The existing building that's there flows currently south to the existing septic field, which is being removed.
It actually flows to two separate septic fields at the moment.
Okay, so the plumbing's gonna be rerouted?
Yes.
The, when the septic fields are removed, is the plumbing gonna be removed also, or just capped off at a certain point?
Well, it's, plumbing fixtures inside?
Underground.
Anything exterior to the building would be removed.
Is going to be removed, okay.
Any pipe or tank, or any element of that system that's outside the building would be removed.
Okay. So I need to know, thank you.
And there's a permit process for that, similar to the permit process for the septic system. There's an unseptic system permit process to remove the septic system.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Mr. Cantor?
Um, Mr. Pape, Mr. Zugner, uh, you mentioned that there's gonna be seven additional trees that are owed to the property?
Nine.
Nine?
I'm sorry, nine. Um, instead of trying to squeeze them into the property, would you be willing to pay the township to put in nine trees in an addition, in another site where we plant trees? We, we have a number of different sites where we plant trees, and we're always looking to add more trees. Instead of trying to squeeze them into your property, can we have them for another area?
Mr. Cantor, the idea is an excellent one, and I'll say yes conditionally, conditioned upon your governing body allowing us to do that. If your governing body accepts that program, we're in. If they don't, we'll squeeze them in here.
Thank you.
But with your endorsement, I'm sure the governing body will look with favorable on us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pape.
I think with the board's permission, I'm ready for Christine Cofone to join us and to thank Mr. Zugner for his testimony this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Zugner.
Thank you.
Ms. Cofone?
Ms. Cofone, if you could be sworn, and then we'll place your credentials on tonight's record.
I was, in fact, sworn on the 25th, but I can be sworn again. It's probably a good idea.
If you swear a testimony and give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
State your name for the record, spell your last.
It's Christine Cofone, C-O-F-O-N-E, and Christine's with a C-H-R-I-S-T-I-N-E. Licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been testifying in such for 28 years. Been qualified here in Howell many, many, many times, and I testified on the original application.
We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. So, Ms. Cofone, you've heard the testimony of all the witnesses over the last two hearings. You've heard the commitments that were made by the rabbi and Mr. Mandelbaum as to the school's operation, the description of the building, the detailed description of the building from our architect, Ms. Rupp, and you've also heard Scott Kennel's description of the traffic improvements. With all of those facts before you, I'm gonna ask if you could take us through what your analysis is, the proofs that this applicant owes the board, and if you could take us to some professional opinion conclusions?
Of course, yes, I did hear all of that testimony, and very importantly in this case, um, you know, I always go to the site, as the board knows, I've testified here enough for you to know that, but in this particular application, I spent a lot of time, and I toured the interior of the building. And when I was there, not only did I tour this building, but I took the opportunity, um, with the applicant, to walk down to the dormitory, that's right just down the street from here that they built, and tour that as well. So, I'm happy to say that I, you know, the dormitory was very tidy. As the boys lived there, I was very impressed. There was a lot of made beds and a pretty tidy way of living, so that was encouraging to see. But when I had the opportunity to tour the existing educational facility, it really, I mean, if you had an opportunity to go in and see the building, you would certainly be able to understand quite, quite well the applicant's motivation to address the overcrowding. I could tell you, there is not a space that's unused in there, and there's really not a great space for any of the students to meet offline with any teachers. There's just not, um, there's just not a lot of space. Every space seems to be doing double duty in some way, functioning as classroom space, and then perhaps something else, and there's just really a lack of functional space, I would say, for a modern school. So, I can say, based on my review of, of the existing conditions on the property, this is, I would say, probably an overdue application for the applicant to run a proper school at this facility. With that being said, the subject property is located in the AR2 zone, and we do need, um, a D variance for this application. Because schools aren't inherently beneficial use, unlike some other D variances you hear, where the applicant goes through the particular suitability, and the Medici proofs, you won't hear that tonight, because it's an inherently beneficial use. Presumptively, and it promotes the general welfare, the applicant satisfies its particular suitability as well as its positive criteria. So what that's left with, and, and this was, if you had an opportunity to look at the resolution of approval on the prior go-around on this, is we're left with the SECA balancing test. And that is really a four-pronged test that requires the applicant identify the beneficial use at stake, and here you have the school. And historically, you have the Solomon Schechter here, school operating here for over a decade, and the applicant has operated here for over a decade themselves. So we have a long history of a school operating on this, this site. And then you have the opportunity to identify any detrimental impacts resulting from the variance. And then after that prompt, you impose reasonable conditions, and you balance. The last prompt of the test is to balance and weigh the positive and negative criteria. And I think, you know, as, as you heard, this site was approved for nearly 400 students last time on a site that was about 9,000 square feet smaller. Because in the application that's before you this evening, along our rear property line, or, um, you know, the back of the existing school property, we are proposing to add about 9,000 square feet for about 20 feet in depth. It goes, I, I would say, a little bit more than half of the entirety of the property. If you're looking at the easel, um, I don't know what exactly that's marked in its evidence, but it's up on the screen as well, you can see that dash line that sort of runs along the back, and that's the 9,000 square feet. And what that does is, it improves conditions over what was improved last time. The last time the application was before you, we sought a building coverage variance, which we're not seeking today. But as the review letter that was prepared by Avaki and Associates identifies, you know, certain bulk variance relief was required in conjunction with this application that would be carried through for the lot coverage, the front yard setback, the side yard setback, as well as the buffers. That relief was requested in conjunction with the prior application. And I would say, you know, it's only improving with this application, because when you add 9,000 square feet to the property, obviously, the coverage goes down, right? Because we're adding additional area that is going to be functioning essentially as a buffer in the back there. So I think the betterments with this, this plan is that we are improving the stormwater management on this property. We are introducing a formal landscaping plan. If you've had an opportunity to go out there, too, you know that the existing vegetation is pretty heavy along the perimeter of this property, but we did, um, representatives of our team did walk the property with Ms. Spiro, your landscape expert, and there is a commitment on behalf of the applicant to supplement where we have maybe missed the mark, but to create a three-foot berm. So, we're certainly creating a better buffering situation than exists on the property today. So, I, I think when you take on balance and you look, right, at the stated purpose of the ARE2 zone, which is to focus development in areas that are, um, not undisturbed and that are already disturbed. And I think that this application is a really good, um, a really good example of that, right? Because we're taking something that's been an existing, um, existing school, and when you look at that purpose, which really reads to minimize the impacts of development in areas located outside of the centers identified in the township's master plan. The goals include not only the preservation of rural and agricultural uses and preservation of rural character, but in addition to act as a buffer between zones of greater development and the other ARE3 zones. So, the fact that this property has been developed, uh, in decades, and this application gives the board an opportunity to sort of improve upon the stormwater management, approve upon the buffering. I think when the board does that balancing test that the SECA test requires you do, I think the board, together with the very, uh, the very needed improvements to the physical plan to this, this building, I think the board can certainly conclude that the relief can be granted, and the SECA balancing test is satisfied, and there will be no substantial detriment to the zone plan.
Thank you, Ms. Cofone.
You're welcome.
Christine?
I think, uh, Ms. Cofone met the required proofs for variance, uh, relief. And I, she, uh, properly indicated, uh, you know, the, they need to meet the proofs under the SECA balancing test. I think they did, um, as she stated, you know, this board previously, um, approved a, uh, basically the same use, but with, uh, um, more students. So they're reducing the impacts, um, but increasing some stormwater and landscaping, and I think that's a positive.
Thank you. Board members? Okay.
Mr. Chair, that is your applicant's direct presentation, but for a very simple summation, we have nothing further for the board this evening.
Okay, then we're gonna open it up to public.
I'll make a motion to open.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Eileen?
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public for questions or comments. Anyone who has some, please come up to the podium, give your name and address, and you will be sworn in.
Andy?
Aye. If you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
It's Larry Gilinsky, G.I.L.I.N.S.K.Y., 359 Kent Road.
Witness is sworn, Mr. Chair.
Okay, questions of the professionals?
Uh, yeah, I have some comments and, uh, focusing off and on the septic system.
We're, we're gonna do five... We're going to do five minutes in five minutes, is what the board rules are. Five minutes, questions, five minutes comments, so we don't, okay? As long as you can comply with that, we're good.
Well, can I have my comments in form of a question?
You can do this, you can do that, but then that's going to eat up your question time.
Okay, well, it's not going to take me five minutes. We live 250 feet away from the southern, the northern edge of the Yeshiva property. We've been there 26 years this coming Thursday. Now, we know Rabbi Weinberger, he's been in our home, we've had talks, you know, we think he's a good guy, and he has said, gun to his head, he's going to be happy with 180 students. But the affairs of people change, and what happens after they're granted these approvals, and a new administrator, to quote from the Bible, "One who does not know Joseph," that's in Exodus, "Schmutz one a," from the rabbis, and they decide that they want to expand, that they have all this extra room, they can get another row of desks into each classroom, they can use the study halls, and suddenly, they can increase enrollment beyond 180 students and faculty. How does the board hold them to the 180 students? You know, in other words, we're saying that, you know, we're on a shallow well and a septic, and this field is near us, and we would ask the board to, to increase the amount of ability for the septic system to handle up to the original 345 students that they asked for.
Would you like me to re...? Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Pape.
Early. Commitments that were made to this board, which are then also made to the community and to Mr. Gilinsky, include that we would cap our students at 180, that we would invite in the spring anyone who wants to, to see our enrollment. We'll provide that to the municipality annually. We will be transparent at all times. There'll be an open invitation to the municipality to enter the building, to see the operation. The commitment to 180 students would be in a developer's agreement, and Howell, every resolution becomes a recorded document, recorded as a lien against the property. It follows whoever owns or uses this piece of property. And it cannot be violated, it cannot be increased without coming here before this board and earning that increase. So, those are the commitments that have been made.
Is that correct?
It is. And John?
And by stipulating at this board case, an exact number, it then becomes enforceable by code enforcement or any other department within the township who pays a visit, whether it be on a yearly inspection schedule or on a surprise inspection to go in there. So, if they are violated, then we are, we are able to enforce that number. So, it's already been stipulated, and that's what we're going to be holding them to.
Okay, that's it. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gilinsky. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to come up? Comments and questions? Not seeing any?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah? All in favor?
Aye.
Eileen?
At this time, the public portion of this hearing has been closed.
Mr. Pape, summation, please.
Summation, a brief summation. This board has delved into this matter in depth, and it probably has the same depth of working knowledge that the professionals on the team have. We're asking for permission to add land to the property, to reduce the size of the, the building by approximately 30 percent. There are commitments for every room in the building that are part of the record that we expect will be in the resolution. There's a maximum number of undergraduate students and a maximum number of graduate students, and there is transparency and the opportunity for the municipality to at all times enforce that transparency. We would ask that the board consider the request for the amended use variance preliminary final site plan favorably this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pape.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to have a question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Pape, through Ms. Robano's office, I had emailed her to make a request to you to ask your engineer about the classroom sizes and the capacity of each one of those classrooms.
The message that I received, Mr. Barillo, was from, to have the architect prepare that plan and add those notes to the plan, and that was done. That was filed with Ms. Robano. All the, the size of each room, the label of each room, the legal capacity and the intended capacity are all added.
Are those numbers available?
Eileen, we have it?
We can put the plans up and show you. I got it late this afternoon. It should be the last exhibit, John. A... A 47, I believe.
Hi.
And where on the, where should we, what page should we put up on the exhibit?
Z... Z2, Z2, John.
And Z3.
Z2.
Z2 and Z3? So, this is the main building?
That's right. That was the request.
And Mr. Barillo had also asked for the, the old building, too. Thank you.
No, the old, the old building had all the square footage. The new building had none of the square footage.
Okay.
All right, so...
3794.
Okay, that's the postgraduate classroom?
That's for both.
So, Ms. Ruben has joined me at the council table. She has been sworn, and her credentials are on the record, so may she consider...
Yes.
So, the question, Mr. Barillo, is the, what are we looking at?
Sure. So, the main study hall at Level 1 will be used for both high school and post-high school in the mornings for morning services, and then the high school boys go upstairs for the remainder of the day.
I'm, I'm just more interested for everybody here about the classrooms.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, we can just do the classroom.
Can you just put one mic closer to you so we can get you on the record, please?
Sure.
And are we starting with the postgraduate side?
That's right. Yes, this classroom is for postgraduates.
And what's the square footage?
1,267 square feet.
And capacity?
63 persons.
Okay.
If we go to Z3, you can see the remainder of the classrooms.
If you wouldn't mind, because I can't see.
That's fine, sure. The classrooms range from 777 square feet.
So, Classroom 1, are they numbered?
That's right, yep. Classroom 1 is on the top, yeah, 777 square feet. Per code, that would be a maximum occupancy of 39 persons. Our intended is 29 persons.
Maximum occupancy, 39?
That's correct.
Okay. Class 2?
2 is 838 square feet, maximum occupancy of 42 persons, with a proposed occupancy load of 29 persons. Classroom 3, 826 square feet, occupancy load per code 41 persons, with a proposed occupancy load of 29 persons. And lastly, Classroom 4, 838 square feet, occupancy load 42 persons, with a proposed occupancy load of 29 persons.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barillo, you good?
So, and Mr. Chair, just to give clarity, because this has kind of come up on other applications. So, we did have an office space application within the last two years on the south end of town on Route 9, and there was a discussion about maximum occupancy per building code versus the actual intended occupancy. Once you start fitting it out with desks and things like that, that eases some of the occupancy. So, you know, what can physically fit in there per the fire code and UCC is sometimes different than what, once you fit it out, can actually fit in there. So, you've heard a clear representation from Mr. Pape and the applicant on a maximum enrollment. You can guarantee that that's going to be in a resolution as a condition, and then, you know, from there, it goes to potential code enforcement, if it ever becomes an issue, and hopefully, it does not become an issue.
Got it. Thank you.
My question is, is the proposed occupancy, can the limit then, that, or, I understand you could fit more, but is that what would be?
Proposed occupancy is consistent with our testimony. There can, we have single classroom per grade, four grades, four classrooms. We have a commitment that 28 students, 28 students and one instructor is 29. There's your commitment, 28 students and one instructor in four classrooms.
Okay. So...
John, John, you said, so you guys go in, you guys meaning...
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement. Does Fire Bureau also do their own inspections? So, it is, so code enforcement goes in?
We're not going in there just because. There has to be a reason for us to be there.
So, code enforcement, there needs to be a reason for you to go. Fire Bureau will be going in on a yearly or...
They, they go in on their yearly fire inspection, correct.
Is it yearly, is it yearly fire?
Yes.
Okay. And that is part of their, I don't know if you can speak for Fire Bureau, but is, is that part of their inspection?
Yes.
Of, of going into a classroom, eyeballing it, making sure that there's 28 and not 40?
They're going, they're going in to ensure that the, the fire code is being adhered to. So, that, that would be subject to occupancy, emergency exits, fire extinguishers, things of Fire Bureau nature. If they suspect that there's an overcrowding issue, which leads to violations in the fire code.
Okay.
Yes, they, and then they would enforce it on their end, and usually, we would get a call if it, if it's something more than that.
But what Fire Bureau is going to see is an occupancy sign that says, you know, say for Classroom 2, in the high school, 42. So, if they see 40 students, then they'll be like, well, they're, they're in, they're in compliance. Correct?
That would be correct.
But, Mr. Barillo, we offered in, it can be in the resolution, in April of every year, the class is chosen. We'll provide that 28 times four students to the municipality so that you can see who they're, they are there. In September, when the school year begins, which is when the maximum number of students would be there, we, is an open invitation to the town to come in and inspect. We are looking for transparency. We're not looking for a way to sneak around.
I'm not, it, it, Mr. Pape, you know, there's been a point of contention for me, that the, the size of this, with wanting to keep the same amount of students. You're quadrupling the size for the same amount of students.
For all of the reasons that have been placed on the record.
And you have the room. You, you can go up to 42 students in that classroom if you want to.
No, we can't, because we've agreed to not do that.
Nobody's going to go, nobody's, then nobody's standing there with a clicker. I don't see fire prevention going in there, and if they see 40 students, they'll be, if the sign says 42, they're in compliance.
I understand your concern. I don't know what more I can, what other commitments the rabbi or all, we can make to you.
And I've been up to the school, and I, and I see that they need more room. The question for me is, how much room do they need? You know, four times the amount seems to be above and beyond.
It, for all of the reasons that have been placed on the record, and all of the purposes that each of those rooms has, we ask that you consider it favorably. And whatever, if, if additional assurances of, of compliance are required, whatever is required, the rabbi is not looking to bring the, the rabbi is not looking in any way to be pulling the wool over anyone's eyes. This is exact, what we are telling you is exactly what they want to do. Nothing...
Because I would imagine, I mean, it's such a really good program by all accounts, that the community's going to start wondering, why can't the rabbi take on more? He's got the space, and there's going to be pressure for him to do so, and rightfully so, because he's got a great program, and he's got the room.
And his word is his word.
If I may, the 20 square feet per person that code allot...
Yep.
You know, that's how we got to our max, maximum occupancy load is, A, like Mr. Kellin said, before, any furniture is in the room. So, any built-in, you know, cabinets along the wall decreases that occupancy. That's number one. Number two, these are high school boys, so we allot 25 square feet per person, things like that, to make the classroom functional. For boys who are there for so many hours during the day, we feel that this is an appropriate sized room for 29 people, not for 42.
So, you're saying the 20 square feet allotted per student does not include, say, their desk?
That's right. Code, code asks us to take the square footage of the room and divide it by 20 for a maximum occupancy load. That's how they, that's their, you know, math. But in our experience, for high school boys who are there for so many hours a day, a number like 25 or 22 square feet per person is more appropriate, and that's why the classrooms are bigger than what code really would mandate, baby, for 29 children, for 29 students, I should say.
John, is that how you interpret it? And is that how it is?
I couldn't speak to that. I'm not sure.
Charlie?
Eileen, I think that is something that would typically reviewed by, like, the building department, construction department, as far as occupancy load and things like that. I, I don't, I can't give you a definitive answer on that. It's their application, they're making certain representations before the board, they've made certain commitments. Ultimately, it's up to the board's determination on how you feel you want to vote on the application, based off the information that's been presented to you.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay, then what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Sayah, before you call the vote, I just have one more question for Mr. Pape. In looking at the aerials, it would appear that the land that's being acquired, I'm not sure if the property line is to scale, but it would appear that it's cutting through a, a structure. On the site plan, it says to be demoed. Is that going to be the responsibility of the applicant, of the property owner, current property owner?
The applicant's responsibility to remove the structure.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we grant the use variance preliminary and minor, and final major site plan and major subdivision requested by the applicant, given and put in the reservation, the, the resolution, their commitment to maintain the population as they've stated in the application, and all commitments made while presenting this application in the three hearings in front of this board. One second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Eileen?
Mr. Barillo?
For the reasons why I mentioned, I'm, I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
I believe the applicant has made concessions that I was concerned about regarding students walking. The buffer was a big issue for me, and I do agree with Mr. Barillo. There, there is some gray area with these classroom sizes, and I, I do think they're bigger than what they should be. But we're voting on, based on what we're putting in the resolution, and that is, how many students are going to be in there. And for that reason, I'm going to vote yes as well.
Mr. Ryan?
I'm going to vote yes on this. I agree with Mr. Barillo that quadrupling the size of the building seems more than necessary, but based on what we're looking at, the concessions that the applicant has made from the first time they were in front of the board... time they were in front of the board, dealing with the septic, dealing with the buffer zone, even dealing with the drive, they've been very amenable to work with the board, so I'm voting yes.
Ms. Godson?
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah?
We're getting two septics out of the Tetecoque and moving it further away, so yes.
Mr. Chairman, all board members, thank you for your deliberations. Thank you, and good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Eileen, we're going to take 10.
The board is now going to take a 10-minute recess, they'll be back at 8:25. The zoning board will now reconvene.
Okay. Case number BA-18-17A, John Blewett, Inc., to use variance, bulk variance, and amended minor subdivision. Application of John Blewett, Inc. as applicant and owner seeking approval to subdivide two existing lots into three new lots on premises known as Block 46, Lots 9, 10.02, 246, Herbertsville Road. Expiration date, July 22, 2024, which is today.
Well, we're here.
Sir?
I'm, I'm Dennis Galvin, I'm with the firm of Davidson, Eastman, Munoz, and Peon. I think it's funny that I am now sitting in the same chair that Mr. Pape sat in, because when I became a lawyer, the first person I worked for was Mr. Pape, and he used to drag me to these meetings everywhere. So, my development chops were all, all learned from him, and my board chops were all learned from Mr. Pontic, so I had pretty good experience. Now, what I have for you tonight is a, I don't want to call it a tale of woe, but in the zoning business, things sometimes take longer than we want them to take. In 2019, we received an approval, and as part of that approval, we had to go to the DEP to get a determination of wetlands. The wetland determination had really nothing to do with this property. It's on the property, but it doesn't adversely affect any of the uses on the property. So, unlike other matters where maybe you have a subdivision and it affects that number of houses, this had absolutely no effect. But, to get all the paperwork right, we had to get the DEP approval. Then COVID hits, so DEP, it doesn't work that fast in the first place, they went into super slow-mo. So, we finally got our DEP approval, and we turned to Jen and we said, hey, we're out of time, our time expired, and Jen thought it would be better if we, instead of asking for permission to, for an extension of time, that we reappear before the board and get a new, and get a clean, fresh approval. I had the great idea that my client, who is going to live in a home that's going to be subdivided, she had mentioned that she might want to make some changes to the home. I said, don't go to the board and then have to go to the board again. So, let's put the changed house plans on the map and come in and clean everything up all in one shot. So, that's what our plan is tonight, okay? The disadvantage I have is, I did not appear in 2018, my engineer did not appear in 2018, and Ms. Cofone did not appear in 2018. So, we will do our best, and if you let us know if there's anything that we're not providing you, we will provide it. But what I'm saying is, we're not as sharp as we'd like to be on this case. That's the truth, okay?
All right.
So, I want to start with Mr. Mark Cefeli, and let him give you the basic overview, but I don't want to redo the case from 2018 unless there's things that the board or its professionals want.
Can we get all your professionals sworn at one time?
Absolutely. And I also want to swear in Michelle Googol. Michelle is the daughter of the Blewets, okay? And I didn't want Mom and Dad Blewett to be here tonight, they didn't need to be here.
Okay.
Christine, are you behind me somewhere?
I am.
You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so?
Yes, yes.
State your name, spell your last, starting with Christine.
Christine Cofone, with a C-H. Cofone is C-O-F-O-N-E.
Mark Cefeli, with a, Mark with a K, C-I, F as in Frank, E-L-L-I.
Michelle Blewett, B-L-E-W-B-T-T.
The witnesses are sworn, Mr. Pape.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Galvin?
All right. So, again, I, I, I'm going to let Mark start to give you the overview, but if it starts going into the weeds, I'm going to stop him, okay? So, go ahead.
Sure. It's time to get sworn in.
You, you've already been sworn in.
Qualifications.
Do you, except, Mark can give you his credentials.
Let's hear it.
Why don't you give us, give the board three boards that you've appeared before recently?
Sure. I've appeared before the municipality of Princeton, township of West Stepford, and the borough of Haynesport.
And how long have you been licensed?
I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey. My license is active for, since 2011, been practicing engineering since 2005.
Is that sufficient?
What school did you go to?
I attended TCNJ.
Okay. We accept the credentials.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so we'll start. There's quick, and then there's like, no, no, go back and start it. Yeah, go ahead.
So, off on the screen, we have a, a minor subdivision map with the aerial overlay. This, I guess we could call Exhibit A14 on the list, was added late. This shows the, the overall property, which is known as Block 46, Lot 9, and 10.02. encompasses a total of 25.01 acres. The property is located on Herbertsville Road, on the west side, across from Malera Park. It's also a county road, County Road 549, and it's approximately 1,200 feet northwest of the intersection of Herbertsville Road, Newton's Corner Road, and Squankum Allenwood Road. The property is within two, two zones here, so it's the ARE2 and the ARE6. The ARE2 is the lower portion of the site, the ARE6 is the, the back portion. ARE6 is about 33% of the property, and the remainder is the, the two. So, the applicant, similarly to 2019 with the last application, is looking to subdivide the property into three, three lots. There's a lot line adjustment in the center to create two commercial lots, which will be known as Lot 9.01 and Lot 10.03. Those existing facilities on those portions of the property will remain as they are today. The third lot, which is on the north side of the property, or right side of the page here, would be known as Lot 10.04, and this would be for the construction of a new single-family residence. There is a single-family home that exists on that portion of the property today, which we can get a little bit into.
That home is 900 square feet, right?
Correct. It's a two-story home, approximately 900 square feet.
When was that built?
I believe 1953.
Okay.
So, we're going to replace that?
Yep. It's, um, so we, we'll get into that a little bit later on, but, so the property does have a proposed right-of-way dedication as well to the county of Monmouth.
Let me just say also, everything that was, everything that was in the resolution in 2019, we're, we're agreeing to all of that, just the same.
Yeah, there was, in that resolution, there was talk of the town preferring an easement of, of dedication rather than a pure dedication.
So, and, Chair, I'll just give some extra clarity to it, right? So, uh, when they filed the application last time originally, I don't think there was any right-of-way dedication or easement. They went to the county, county said you got to provide an easement, so to not have to come back to the board and change all their calculations with coverage, we said right-of-way easement, which was fine. Now, they're back here and doing right-of-way dedication. All the numbers match with the right-of-way dedication. So, what you're seeing is largely the exact same application from a minor subdivision approval perspective that we approved back, you know, a couple of years ago. The lot designation 1004 with a minimum lot area of two acres, that was something that was specifically requested at the board at that time. I think the, the lot was actually smaller, and they agreed to extend it to make it a minimum of two acres. It's split-zoned, you know, ARE2, ARE6, so, you know, they're at least meeting the ARE2 standard for that. What they're really here for tonight is, as Mr. Galvin said, on 1004, there was an existing dwelling that they were carving off to give it to one of the, you know, heirs of the Blewett family. They're now proposing to demolish that structure and propose a new structure in that footprint. So, the subdivision and all that stuff is exactly the same. Really, the only difference is demolishing the old structure, putting a new structure, there's some bulk relief that's associated with that. I'll let them get into that some more.
So, what I would ask next is for, Eileen, could you help me with A12?
It's the plot plan.
John?
A12?
A12.
Yes, sir. It should be the one all the way on the right.
Oh, you're not going to know where you're going.
It's the, the tab all the way on the right.
Can we make that bigger?
Yeah, you will.
They keep, they keep referring to Lot 10.4. On the paper that we got, it says 10.2. Is it, is it indeed 10.4? Is that, does that need to be corrected?
10.2 is the old lot. It will become 10.04 as a result of the subdivision if approved.
Okay.
That's why they're referring it to it.
Thank you.
I concur with Mr. Bana's explanation.
I'm so handy.
Go ahead.
Sure. So, this is a plot plan, it was submitted with the application, Exhibit A12. This shows a zoom in on the Lot 10.04 that we were just discussing, the two-acre proposed lot, where we're going to be placing a single-family home.
So, on the left, on the left is a big, is a picture of the whole, is a, a good portion of the lot and the house, and then the picture on the right is kind of a close-up of it, correct?
It's in enlargement, with more detail than, than the larger one. So, the applicant's looking to construct a, a single-story home with a total footprint of 3,700 square feet. It would have a, a single attached garage, and then a detached two-car garage. There would be a new driveway, similar location to the existing, slightly shifted towards the, the property line to the left of the home. The home would have a, a basement, a non-habitable basement though at this point, so non, non-finished.
And we will do soil borings, whatever needs to be, be done here?
The pavement section for the driveway was not included on the plans, so we are going to provide that as a condition of approval if so is granted. That would be in accordance with the town requirements for either asphalt or concrete to be determined. We have the proposed home, will have a total of three bedrooms, two and a half baths. It has adequate parking on the property for more than the two required parking stalls for a, a two, a three-bedroom home, within the garage and on the driveway. It does have proposed utilities to replace the existing, so the existing septic field will be removed along with all components of that system. A new septic field would be proposed.
And that'll be an upgrade then, right?
Yes. So, it'd be in accordance with the, the new rules and regulations, and the Board of Health. We had performed initial soil testing, the results were, were suitable for a septic without mounting, which would be a favorable way of installing it. There's also a existing above-ground oil tank that serves for heating the home, that will also be removed and replaced with a new above-grids oil tank. There's no gas service in this, in this area, natural gas, that is. The existing well water will remain to serve this home, and that's located in the, the front yard of the property, so it'll have adequate distance from the, the septic system in accordance with the septic regulations. We have the, the grading on the property that will closely mimic the existing grading, so drainage patterns will remain the same. The majority of the site drains from the front towards the back into the, into the wetlands area. Like we said before, we do have no impact on the wetlands that were discovered with the LOI. There's a 50-foot buffer on those wetlands, we're also not impacting that buffer at all with our proposed development. We're probably 150 feet off of the transition area with this development. If you want to switch over to the, the Googol.
Architectural plan.
The architectural plan. So, this is the, the proposed floor plan for the home. It's 3,700 square foot footprint, but only 2,630 square feet of, of livable space. There's two enclosed, or two covered porches, one at the front main entrance, and another one at the rear, and then there's also the attached single-car garage. It does have the, the three bedrooms, two and a half baths, and along with other spaces. We don't have.
Why not?
It wasn't submitted.
Yes, well, I had it.
I didn't see it. Was it submitted or?
I thought we submitted a copy of the facade. I don't see an exhibit of the facade.
I didn't send it today, but.
Is it part of the architectural plan?
Like a color rendering? There wasn't a color rendering, it was just a picture. It's a simple home, it was a...
Is it not part of the architectural plan? It's a, there's three sheets.
Yeah, they give them to, 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 there it is.
What? We have the archetls? Doesn't get any better than that?
Single-story home, you see the, all four sides, lots of windows within the type requirements of the town.
Let me, let me cut you off, you don't need to speak to the architectural. We wanted to give you an impression of what it is that we're proposing. I would, Charlie suggested that we should have it, I think that's an excellent suggestion. Board needs to know what it's buying. This is the, the look of the building. If you want, Michelle can go into the detail about the materials. Again, I don't know how far you want to get into the woods.
I think this is, you know, an attractive single-family home. I think what they've presented is fine.
Good.
And just to clarify and add to that, right? So, the reason we asked for the architectural is because they're asking for some relief with the application, which I'll, I'll try to summarize a little bit more quickly, right? The lot area, that's no change from the prior approval, two acres proposed, or, because it's split-zone, it's ARE6 also, so they need that technicality. The lot width as well, they're proposing 119.5 feet, where 200 and 300 feet are required strictly for the ARE2 and ARE6. The front yard setback, they're proposing 22.6 feet, which largely matches the existing condition. It's just because the footprint is extending, expanding a little bit, and it's being reoriented a little bit, that requires a technical relief. Side yard setback, I think to the northerly property line, because they're expanding the footprint, 17.5 is being proposed, or 30 foot is required. And then also, they do have a detached garage, two-car garage, that requires relief along the southerly property line. Our ordinance requires it to be equal to the building height, which I think they provide a calculation for 15 feet, where five feet is proposed. So, when they get to the planning testimony and Ms., Ms. Blewett, maybe she can provide testimony regarding the need for the detached two-car garage when there's also a one-car garage proposed with it. What I will say from an engineering perspective, anytime we get an expanding footprint and stuff like that, you know, stormwater runoff and things like that, we always, I always recommend the board consider requiring dry wells with the application. Let's open it up to public and see if there's any concerned neighbors from a stormwater runoff perspective, and then you can determine.
We're not, we're not going to battle it. We're, we're grateful that your help, this much help is like fantastic, we have no problem providing a dry well if it's necessary. Although, we don't think it's going to have, we don't really think that there's going to be much of an impact in this.
Yeah. So, now I would just clarify, it would just be for the increase in impervious coverage from the existing to the proposed, so it's not like size for the entirety of the new dwelling, it's just an increase to, if there's any impact, mitigate the impact.
Yeah, we'd be happy, we'd be happy to comply with that.
And then, the only other comment that I, I would, or two other comments, apologize. So, last time this was here, I think predates when we had any ordinance for like a curb and sidewalk contribution. That is different now, there's an ordinance that's inactive where any development, uh, would have to either provide curb and sidewalk, or sorry, provide sidewalk along the frontage or make contribution into the fund, or seek waiver from the governing body. That's something that the board should discuss as part of the application, or provide testimony regarding non-applicability.
Charlie, does the area have sidewalk?
No. So, if you're going to grant the waiver, then it would be contingent on a contribution to the fund.
Same thing, I, I agree with you, I don't think this site's appropriate for sidewalk and curbs, but...
So, you'll make a contribution to the fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And then, um, apologize, I lost my train of thought for a second.
We keep saying yes, we're throwing them off.
It is true. So, and then the last thing I'll say is, um, sorry, two things. You heard about non-habitable basement, and I just want to give clarity, so the structure that's there right now, it's, it looks... So the structure that's there right now, it's, it looks like two-story from existing condition, but there is like a, the structure's kinda elevated, so there is like, almost like a walk-in basement. So, um, even though the footprint is being expanded, you know, uh, they're kinda lowering the structure, make it more open floor plan kinda thing. So I get that. Uh, and then as far as the subdivision itself, uh, where there's two commercial lots that go there, there was a requirement with their approval that there needed to be like an access easement agreement, because it's gonna be two separate lots. So I just wanted to state that for the record, Dennis, before you file them out, there just needs to be, uh, like an easement agreement, because the lot line, the driveway's on the one lot and then not.
That's gonna be identified in the resolution?
Correct. And that was a condition of the prior approval, so I'm just, just putting it out there so it's for awareness.
Any more, Charlie?
That's it.
Okay. Board members?
Do, do you wanna hear from Michelle on the two-car garage?
We wanna hear from Michelle on the two-car garage. Ms. Bluit, welcome. Our engineer says that we, we wanna hear from you on the need for the additional two-car garage.
Um, we have an existing garage there now that is oversized with one door. So we were just going to replace that structure and make it a little bit larger and have two doors instead of one.
So are you gonna park cars in a garage? Some people put skis and bicycles.
Probably golf clubs, honestly.
Big box for golf.
Yeah.
The house is for the wife. The garage might be for the husband.
So I think, um.
That's what I said.
So I think.
I'm not allowed to say that anymore, am I?
To further, uh, Mr. Conleve's, uh, question, the, um, architectural plans for the new home show an attached one-car garage and then you have the two-car detached garage. Um, will the one-car garage be used to store vehicles or?
Eventually, I would hope with my son. Um, yes, so we would have three cars eventually. So I was kinda planning for the future, so I don't have to make any amendments.
Okay, so your two cars probably in the two-car garage? And then the additional third car at some point?
And we think in this location, it's very low impact. It's not like we're impacting neighbors by having this garage.
Thank you, Christine. Board members?
I'm good.
Dennis Root?
Good. So then we're looking for Ms. Capone.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Hello, I'm back.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you, Charlie. So, uh, the only thing I, I say I'm extra qualified to testify on this site. My daughter swam at Camp Center and worked at Pine Grove, so I have driven carpool past this site a ludicrous amount of times. This probably has got to be one of the sites I've visited the most in my entire career, based on my experience as a carpool mom as well as planner. Um, so in, in preparing for tonight, I had the opportunity, um, Mr. Galvin's office was kind enough to share all the prior resolutions with us. Probably the most relevant one to my testimony is the 2019 resolution, because that was also an application to create three lots, which we have before you, to two. Mr. Conleve's recollection is, is spot-on accurate, because right in that recollection, it was a recommendation as a planner, though it was not, it was the planner's recommendation that the lot be increased to two acres to meet the minimum, the newly created lot, so the one that's going to have the dwelling demolished and reconstructed. That, that 2019 application was also given de-variants relief for a number of things. It was to legitimize the commercial uses on the property, but also to have multiple principal structures. So that relief was all previously granted. In conjunction with that application, there was a finding that the applicant was used, the application was used for some 60 years as its current facility. So I think certainly the board could take notice of that with respect to the de-variants relief that's required in conjunction with this application, because it's really not materially modified. The really only, the change is that in that application, the way I read it, it was that on the newly created lot that we're proposing tonight, which is lot 10.04, that dwelling at the time appeared to be staying. The applicant is now proposing to remove the existing 900-square-foot dwelling and propose a new dwelling. Uh, those floor plans and architectures were previously provided for you. But what that does is it does create a little bit of additional variance relief in that that structure will require a front yard setback of 22.6 feet where 50 is required, a side yard setback of 17 and a half where 30 is required, and then of course the, um, accessory structure, the detached two-car garage. So we would have a total of three garage spaces on site. Um, you did hear the testimony from the applicant that, um, you know, that it's essentially gonna be used for storage space, for golf clubs. I think always better to have additional space to put those things in, because if they're inside the garage, then hopefully they're not outside, which contributes to the curb appeal on the property. Um, so I think the board can certainly grant the variance relief under the C1 section of the statute as well as the C2. The C1 statute is, it invokes when you have lawful pre-existing conditions on a subject property or an irregular configuration of a property. In the absence of any C1 criteria, the board can grant under the C2, or what's called the flexible C, if you find that one or more purposes of the, of the land use law are advanced. I think the board can rest on criteria G, which talks about sufficient space, um, for a variety of uses in appropriate locations, and also criteria I, which talks about a desirable visual environment. The existing structure on the subject property is a little tired and lacks curb appeal, and I think the new proposed dwelling will certainly increase the curb appeal on the property. The other thing that I would tell the board is that there is a provision in the master plan that does recommend additional, um, for lots under two acres in the AREE 2 zone, it does talk about grandfathering for those smaller lots in the AREE 2 zone. So hard to say this is a grandfathered lot, because we didn't perfect our approval, so it didn't exist. But I do think that the board can certainly take notice that the master plan does recognize that there are some smaller existing lots in the AREE 2 zone, and then does recommend an accommodation for those for the bulk requirements associated with that. So I do think that that is something that's recognized in the township and to the extent you wanna look at this as a grandfathered lot, as it was previously approved, I think the board can certainly consider that. So I think we meet our statutory proof, our statutory burden of proof for the positive as well as the negative criteria. I think the board can certainly grant this variance with no substantial detriment to the zone plan or the public good. This is a, um, split-zone property, and the lion's share of the conditions as they exist on the property will exist as they are today. And where we're making modifications, we're replacing a tired dwelling with a new and improved one. So as far as the negative criteria, I see nothing that would rise to the level of a substantial detriment.
Thank you, Ms. Capone.
You're welcome.
Christine?
I take no issue with Ms. Capone's testimony.
Okay. So, board members, any questions?
No.
Okay, then can we open it to public, please?
I'd like a motion to open the public.
All in favor? Eileen?
At this time, the chairman has opened this hearing up for members of the public who have questions or comments on this application. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, give your name and address, and be sworn in.
Motion to close.
All in favor? Eileen?
Public portion has now closed on this application.
Summary, sir?
Very, very simply, I think we're presenting you a much better case than we did in 2019. We now have the DOT approval regarding the wetlands. We're now giving you a new, nicer residential structure. Because of the gap in time, now we have to make a contribution to the Sidewalk and Curb Fund, which is, yeah, what, that's what we gotta do, okay? And so I believe that we're better than what you got in 2019. So on a whole, I submit this to you.
Thank you. Charlie, subject of course to Monmouth County.
Yeah, so, um, the right-of-way dedication, that's obviously goes through, uh, the county. Uh, we just ask that once it gets recorded, provide a copy for our records if they require something different than just the filing on the map. Uh, and then the only other thing would be the, the access easement, you know, for the board attorney's review and approval, just because the two commercial lots, the driveway favors the one versus the other. Um, and then, uh, I was gonna say one more thing. Uh, oh, I just wanna know, uh, they, they did provide the freshwater wetlands LOI, and it was already recorded by deed, so that's, that's, uh, already in the record. And that was something that we, the board requested, just because it's, it favors that new lot 10.04. So I get Ms. Bluit says she's gonna build a home and live there, but anyone in the future knows what they're buying, that there's some wetlands on the property, so.
Dry well?
Correct. Dry wells and then the sidewalk contribution.
And the septic.
Septic will be subject to Board of Health.
Monmouth County Board of Health.
Correct.
We're confident it's gonna work.
Very good.
So, uh, I guess Charlie or Andy, just what we did in 2018 that we didn't talk about tonight, I guess it's all gonna be kinda put together. Everything's covered is what I'm just worrying about. Everything that was said back then and amended to this new presentation.
Yes, well, Mr. Galvin indicated they stood by all of the prior requirements and, and prior approval, so we'll incorporate all of that into this resolution.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Okay, then, what's the pleasure of the board?
Uh, members of the board, um, I was actually one of the members when we approved this back in 2019, was it? You guys are a good applicant, because it's got a long history in our town. And for a simple thing of benefiting the owners to have a nicer-looking, uh, structure for living, I take no exception to that. I think based on the finding facts, I'm very happy to make the motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Also being around in 2019, and, uh, this definitely is a step up and beautiful. I, I, uh, also, I second the motion.
Okay, Eileen, we got a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
The chairman says.
Yes.
Motion carries. Application's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you to everybody.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Yes, so she has to go sit outside.
Outside? Well, in there, that's fine. That's where I was planning on going. All right, see you guys later.
Yeah, she couldn't. I actually work right up. It's a business. Yeah, but they also say. Yeah.
You, you know. Okay, up in front of us is case number BA 24-05, Jessica Bassett. This is a bulk variance, application of Jessica Bassett as applicant and owner seeking bulk variance approval for the construction of a single-family dwelling with a septic on an undersized lot on premises known as Block 29, Lot 63, 23 Laurel Place. Expiration date, August 15, 2024. Sir?
Chairman, members of board, my name is Hunt Parry. I'm representing the applicant.
Okay.
Justin, would you swear that?
We're gonna swear in your witnesses?
Yes.
Okay.
You want them all at once?
All at once is good.
I'm a little overwhelmed with the technology, so bear with me.
It's okay.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Please state your names, spell your last for the record, starting with the.
Jessica Bassett, B-A-S-S-E-T-T.
Matt Wilder, W-I-L-D-E-R.
Dario Pasquale, P-A-S-Q-U-A-R-I-E-L-L-O.
The witness, the witnesses are sworn in, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. So, sir, you, um, you have an engineer?
I do.
So let's hear from the engineer first.
Well, I, okay.
Unless you wanna.
Well, I wanted to introduce the applicant, so.
Okay, all right, go ahead. All right, so.
And there's some questions that I need to put before the.
All right, you got it.
Board anyway. Um, state your full name.
Jessica Bassett.
And where do you reside?
1813 Central Avenue, Wall, New Jersey.
Are you employed?
Yes.
Where do you work?
The Salvation Army.
How long you been with the Salvation Army?
24 years.
How long have you owned?
Yeah, I was talking to them.
Pull that mic a little closer to you, so we.
This one here?
No, no, right on the radio. That's a mic if you told.
Just, yeah, just talking to that.
Cause we're, we're hardly picking you up.
All right. When, when did you purchase this property?
I am not.
Bring you up to date.
Yes. Five years, six years? Oh, in 2019, sorry.
And you've owned this property since 2019?
Correct.
And this property is in your name alone?
Correct.
Have you ever shared ownership of this property with anybody else?
No.
Do you also own the property next door?
Correct.
What's the address of that property?
27 Laurel Place.
And, uh, do you own that property outright, or is there somebody else entitled?
No, I own that with my husband.
With your husband. So that's in joint, in joint title with you and your husband. So, um, you've got an application before the board here for bulk variances in order to, to construct a home. Have you contacted the surrounding property owners in order to ascertain whether they would be willing to either purchase your lot or to provide, um, sufficient, uh, property to you to purchase so that you could conform the lot to the requirements of the zoning ordinance?
Yes, we have. I have.
I refer the, um, I guess I'm gonna do this, make reference to the, to the exhibit here.
The buy-sell letters?
Yes, please.
Yeah, you have, uh, A-11.
A-7 and A-8.
A-7 and 8 were the ones that were sent out, and A-9 and 11 were the responses.
Okay, well, then, just go with 9 and 11.
Do you need, do you?
We can accept your right, uh, representation if. No, if we have them and.
We have them.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, they're in the record, so.
We're good.
Okay. And, and so neither of the property, the adjoining property owners agreed to, uh, convey any property or to buy the property from you. Is that correct?
Correct.
So with this property, what's your intention for this property?
To build a permanent home that I will live in.
You're gonna reside there with your husband?
Correct.
Okay. So it's gonna be your primary residence?
Correct.
I'd also, now I'd like to make reference to A-10, which are the pictures. I'm gonna show you the pictures. I don't, I don't know which, it's one exhibit, but it's four pictures.
I think you're up to the engineer.
This, there's, would you describe, there's four pictures here that you're going to display. Would you describe to the board what those pictures are?
These, these are neighboring homes in, in the neighborhood that we live in. This one, I believe, is around the corner from us.
Do you know the address of that?
I don't know. This is directly next to us, to the left. Our neighbors, this is at the corner, at the end of our street, probably like four houses, five houses down. And I, this is in the neighborhood. I'm not exactly sure which exact one that one is.
So we're showing these pictures to the board to give them an idea of what the.
In that neighborhood.
The neighborhood houses can, uh, currently are.
Charlie, are they all on conforming lots?
So, I don't know, was this submitted with the application or was this presented in, as an exhibit?
Then we sent you the other day.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I can't tell you where, which property addresses these are or the block and lots. Um, I can tell you, looking at Google Street View today, that the, at least two of them, maybe three of them, are not on the same side of, uh, Laurel Place, abutting Lake Louise there. One of them may be, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to tell you for sure without like a block lot or an address.
Okay.
My intention in, in, in presenting the exhibits is just merely to show that the appearance of the surrounding properties, not, not to, to, uh, establish any sort of, uh, prior action by the board in granting.
Is the one that had the boards in the windows, am I correct that it's boarded up?
That one there? Is there anybody residing in that house, do you know?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I believe there is.
It's just in the neighborhood. Again, uh, these are just intended to show what the neighboring houses are looking like.
What, what should we, what should we draw from the pictures?
What should we, what should we draw from the pictures?
Just what the appearance of the neighborhood is, very basic, very basic.
One of the houses seems okay to me, right?
Right.
So, what, what should I confer from these pictures then?
Well, once you see the architectural plans and what our, our house will appear, as our house will appear, then...
So, it's for comparison purposes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have no other questions, so if the applicant, the board has any questions?
Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So, we have...
I wasn't sure if there was a question coming in or not.
We have Block Twenty-nine, Lot sixty-three, which is twenty-three Laurel Place.
Correct.
And the applicant currently lives at twenty-seven Laurel Place.
No, the applicant said they currently live in Wall Township.
The applicant does not reside there.
So, they, so they own the adjacent property, but, and I'll let Mr. Baer add more, but as far as, I had some questions about like merger doctrine and things like that, whenever you have undersized lots, especially an undersized vacant lot, if at any point in time the properties were in common ownership and not filed, or not created by a subdivision map prior to a certain date, the merger doctrine may apply and they could technically be merged, you've heard them put on a representation that the adjacent property is owned by her and her husband, whereas this property is owned by just her, so that in itself, without going back through the detailed chain of history, at least at this point in time, you know, under the current ownership, then there wouldn't be any merger.
There wouldn't be any merger.
Is there anything on twenty-seven, or is it vacant?
So...
Well, let me...
Isn't there a house on twenty-seven Laurel Place? I'm sorry, twenty-three that's vacant, the, twenty-three Laurel is vacant, twenty-seven has a house on it.
Okay.
Thank you. Do you currently rent that property out? Yes.
I have, I'm super, just, I, I don't have this marked, I have a copy of the deed into my client's name, and it was deeded by the Carmellos, and they had had ownership of the property since nineteen forty-seven, so it, that individual...
We're, we're good, sir.
Okay.
Yes, we're good.
Need anything else on that?
No, no.
Before I let go of the witness.
No, we're good, we're good, board members, any questions for the applicant? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, I'd like to call the architect. State your name for the board.
Dario Pasquale.
Are you a licensed, can you give us your credentials, please?
Yes, I'm licensed in New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania, I've been licensed since two thousand eight, I'm a principal of Dario Architecture and Design.
Where'd you go to school?
NGIT.
Okay, we accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Would you walk us through the plans for the, the structures?
I mean, it's a pretty simplistic twenty, just under twenty-five hundred square foot, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath dwelling on a crawl space with a single-car garage. To get a little bit more detail, there's a master on the first floor, open concept floor plan, second floor has a recreation room, two bedrooms, and a single bath.
Clarify fairly, so you said it's on a crawl space, because the garage looks like it has stairs going down?
You have an older plan, I believe, there was an update, and there's, it's on a crawl space now.
Was that submitted to the board?
I believe so.
Other than the ones from February twenty...
Yeah, so the same thing you saw. Yeah.
If it happens, there's a copy here, a copy on the board.
Alright, well, okay, then can we get this marked?
Yeah.
Well, our plans usually submit in advance, so our profession, so it can be reviewed by our engineer and planner.
Charlie?
I mean, that's typically, like, can you summarize the changes of what you're, is being presented to us?
Absolutely, the main change was what you picked up on, the staircase is no longer present in the garage, because there's no longer a basement, and on the second floor, we changed the window configuration for that bonus room or recreation room to three fixed large panel windows at the rear of the dwelling for the, for lake view.
So, so let's put that on the record, and Charlie, you can take a look at that.
Yeah, yeah, if you wanna, yeah, if you want to mark that as an exhibit, we can take a look at it, so, and I just wanna give the board context on that, right, so Lake Louise, and when they get into their engineer's testimony, is a water body, obviously, and there's a map flood hazard, FEMA mapping for that, there's also potential flood hazard area implications with the property, so we'll be looking for their engineer, Mr. Wilder, to provide some testimony, there's certain things you can and cannot do within a flood hazard area, there's newer rules that were enacted July of last year, which would probably preclude the installation of a basement on this property, so I would presume why that was eliminated from the plan, you know, we had some questions about the recreation room and whether, you know, there's no closets proposed for the recreation room, right? So, there's no intent to make that into additional bedroom space or any...
No, that's why we actually made three fixed panel windows at the rear, so that it can never be operable, can never be a bedroom of any sort.
Okay. And then as far as the finished floor elevation, that's the same as what was shown on Mr. Wilder's plot plan.
Yes, none of that changed, it was basically because of the water table and the location to the FEMA guidelines, we had to refer to it to a crawl space.
And then there's no, like, full-height attic, really?
No, not at all, no, it's very low pitch, really, you can see the elevations, none of that's changed, it's all the same.
So, we're talking three bedrooms?
Correct.
One on the, one on the first floor?
Yes.
Family room, dining room, and then a recreation, a large recreation room on the second floor with a second and a third bedroom?
Correct.
Do you have any questions? That's all I have for the architect right now.
I think just, as, you know, Charlie mentioned, the flood hazard area is certainly a concern, so I think we need to hear testimony from the engineer just about the elevation of the site and everything.
You got it, thank you, any questions for the architect?
I, I have a question.
Go ahead. Charlie? Or Mr. Conliffe? There, it seems to be simple, just a bulk variance, because it's a house on an undersized lot, what, not saying they're going to do this, but what would make this compliant on an undersized lot in this case, what, what are they not doing that they would have to do to make it compliant?
So, so this is a little complex one, right, so on our ordinance, anything that, I think existed prior to nineteen eighty-one, you're allowed to build on it, if it's not serviced by public sewer, you can provide a septic system, but the minimum lot area requirement is forty thousand square feet, along with that, you also have to meet the front, rear, and side yard setbacks of the AREE-one, the existing property is thirteen thousand one hundred ninety-seven square feet, so point three acres, so it's not meeting the minimum lot area requirement from a septic perspective, from the front yard setback, fifty feet is required, forty-four point nine feet is proposed, from a side yard setback perspective, north and south respectively, thirty feet is required in both instances, twenty-one point two feet is proposed to the north, twenty-nine point five is proposed to the south, rear yard setback, a minimum of forty is required, whereas thirty-seven feet is proposed, and then on top of that, you also have the underlying, I think it's AREE-three is the zone for this, I wanna make sure I have that correct, yes, it's AREE-three zone, so the lot area is already kinda subsumed in the forty thousand square foot minimum, but then you have lot depth with requirements, two hundred foot's required, one hundred and thirty-four feet existent is proposed, lot width, two hundred foot's required, one hundred feet existent and proposed, those are existing conditions, right, they can't, you've heard them provide testimony on the record that they can't purchase adjacent land, because no one's willing to sell them adjacent land, no one's willing to buy them from them, so those are things that are difficult for them to change, building coverage, a maximum of ten percent is permitted, where thirteen point three is proposed, lot coverage, twelve-and-a-half percent is permitted, where twenty point seven percent is proposed, so, you know, back to your original question, right, there's certain things you can't change if you can't buy or sell adjacent property, you can't change the lot area, you can't change the lot width, lot depth, those are given with the property, now, as far as bulk setbacks, front, side, rear, pervious coverage, lot coverage, those are a result of the proposal that's before you, sometimes it comes down to the bulking and the massing of the structure.
Right, just kind of to add on to what Charlie's saying, in addition to the side yard, front, side, rear yard setbacks, you know, which could potentially, maybe they don't meet them because of the size of the lot, building coverage and lot coverage are percentages, so theoretically, there's a little more flexibility in meeting those, it's just, you know, you can meet the building coverage, but your home may have to be smaller, because it's a percentage of the overall lot, and the same with lot coverage, impervious coverage, you know, theoretically, any size lot should be able to meet that lot coverage variance, it's just a smaller percentage of development that would be permitted.
Understood, thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we'll hear the engineer, sir. Once again, your name, sir?
Matthew Wilder, W-I-L-D-E-R, I'm doing double duty tonight, both an engineer and a planner.
Charlie?
Yes.
So, is he testifying as an engineer?
Oh, he's, I've, he's presented to us as an engineer before, I'll let Christina plan as, you know, for the planning perspective, it's not a use variance, but, you know, there is a lot of bulk relief being taught.
Right, so I know that this board does not permit AI, non-AICPs to provide testimony on use variances, this is, these are just bulk variances, so we do sometimes hear just PP's on those, ultimately, I think in this case, would be up to the attorney to decide whether or not he thinks, you know, the testimony his professional is providing is appropriate.
Okay, alright, let's hear your engineering credentials, sir.
Sure, so I graduated from Rowan University in two thousand and six with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering, I've worked solely in the field of land development since then, I've been a licensed professional engineer for eight years, I've been a licensed professional planner for six years, I've testified on the engineering side on probably three hundred and seventy-five applications in front of sixty boards, on the planning side, I've probably done a hundred applications on forty boards, I've done not only use variances, but plenty of...
We'll accept your credentials as an engineer right now.
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
And for what it's worth, I was before this board about a month ago on a similar site, where it was an isolated undersized lot, and I was accepted as both an engineer and planner on that application.
Okay.
Thank you, so a lot of my testimony has already sort of been discussed by some of the board questions, or some of the testimony provided by your professionals, but the crux of this application is that the property is sixty-seven percent undersized for the zone, and what we're proposing is your typical single-family home, the home is, as the architect testified, is less than twenty-five hundred square feet, it's twenty-four, forty-one square feet, give or take, the home will not have a basement, because it is in a special flood hazard area, Mr. Conliffe had made reference to the regulations that have changed with respect to fluvial flood hazard areas, so the change required is basically the hundred-year flood elevation as established by FEMA, you add three feet, that's your new base flood, and you add another foot to get to the New Jersey flood hazard area design flood elevation, so that elevation is elevation fifty-eight, so your finished floor has to be at least four feet above that, which puts you at elevation sixty-two, we're at elevation sixty-four and change, so we are above that, because of the, the flood zone limit, we cannot have a basement, so there was a question regarding the recreation room, and we spoke about how there are fixed windows on that room, that room really is to serve storage for the home, the home will have a one-car garage and a driveway large enough to accommodate two vehicles, so the home really, because it's an undersized lot, and we did try to squish things as much as we could, we needed to create some semblance of storage on site, and that recreation room, aside from giving a beautiful view of the lake, provides that additional storage for the property owner, as it relates to the layout of the design, it's typical, typical of a single-family home, again, you have a two-car, a two-car driveway that leads to a one-car garage, the septic is in the front yard, I know this board is sensitive to septic systems in front yards, and the appearance of a mounted system, if you will, so we had soils testing done for this property, and right now, the septic system sits about two-and-a-half feet above the road, which is not gonna have the appearance of a mounted system that's sticking very far out of the ground, right now, I will indicate that the grades on the plan are a little bit harsher than they probably need to be, I will revise the plan to sort of blend those grades a little bit better with the street, and it will look like your prototypical house, where the house sits three to four feet above, above the road, you're not gonna notice a septic system in the front, and part of the challenge with the septic system is, when you get closer to the water, as you'll notice, the grade drops off front to back, you know, good six or seven feet, you start dealing with potential impacts to groundwater, so because of the soil testing, coming back relatively positively for the site, we decided that the septic system in the front yard would be the optimal location, again, we didn't wanna get too close to, to the lake, there are certain separation requirements required from the lake, the septic system in the front really provides us the most separation between the adjacent septics, the neighboring wells, the development or the improvement on our property, so that was why we had located the septic system where we did, as, so from an engineering perspective, it's a pretty simple design, there, there's not much to it, but the application is complicated by the fact that it is an undersized lot, again, thirteen thousand one hundred ninety-seven square feet exists, where because of the age of this property, forty thousand square feet is required, this property was actually created by subdivision somewhere in the early nineteen forties, it was part of the map of Lake, Lake Louise, and if you could go to my tax map exhibit for a moment, there was a question about the pictures and whether they were on similarly sized properties or conforming properties, there is not a conforming property in this part of town at all, so again, this is in the AREE-three zone, and what I've done is on this tax, this is just the tax map for the township, I've highlighted the property in red, which, let's see if I can, which is that right there, and you can see all of the properties, which are but Lake Louise on the east side, where the lake is on the west, are similarly sized or actually even smaller, so when this property was created back in the nineteen forties, there was no AREE-one, two, three, four, five, or six zone, so properties were irregularly shaped, because they were really following the limits of the lake, and what you had were smaller lots created, so you can get more homes to make, take advantage of, of the lake, if you wouldn't mind going to my aerial exhibit now? So, this is just showing the adjacent surrounded property with our subject site highlighted in yellow right here, so what you'll see is the lake is to the west, to the north is single-family homes, south, single-family homes, and to the east, single-family homes, the, the homes really vary in size and style, you have homes that were built in the nineteen forties that are as small as I think I saw on the tax records, seven hundred and fifty square feet, and then you have some newer construction, which is this property right here, which is based on my measurements, approaching six thousand square feet, none of these properties are on conforming lots, the home that I just referenced that's approaching six thousand square feet is on a thirty thousand square foot lot, so certainly larger than our lot, but still undersized and with a much larger home, that home seems to be the outlier for the area, generally speaking, the homes have footprints somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve hundred to eighteen hundred square foot home, area, the predominant home style is ranch, but there are plenty of one-and-a-half stories, and some of the newer homes are similar in style to what we're proposing, where the habitable area is two stories with an attached one-car garage. So, I don't know if I need to re, to go over the variances that we're seeking, as Mr. Conliffe has outlined, again, they're a function of the fact that the property is undersized, so when you look at the AREE-one zone requirements for the setbacks, again, we're sixty-seven percent undersized for the AREE-one zone.
Okay, so Charlie?
Yes.
From the engineering perspective, the front, the, the, the mounted septic?
Yeah, so I can tell you, you know, there's been this board's position, at least since I've been with the board, that... I've been with the board, that mounded septic systems, especially in the front yard, is not visually aesthetically pleasing installation. If you go down on like Maxim Southern Road in town, you can see there's some properties with some mounted septic systems, and they stick out pretty abundantly clear. I do know, and there is some alternate designs to septic systems where you can reduce the amount of mounding necessarily. You know, Mr. Wilder said the system is approximately two and a half feet above the road grade. Did you investigate that as part of any of your engineering design, Mr. Wilder?
The alternative drainage system or septic system?
Yeah.
So the septic, the elevation of the septic system is being really dictated by the seasonal high groundwater, which was observed at 48 inches below grade. So, and again, the property is in, the home is in a flood zone. There's going to be some grading around the home, so we don't have a substantial crawl space or amount of foundation exposed. This is not going to look like a mounded septic system. You know, typical mounded septic system is you see harsh grades up four or five feet. Oftentimes, you'll see the septic system above or at the same level as the finished floor of the home. This portion of the property, which will have the septic system, will be a good two-plus feet below the first floor of the house. It'll simply look like the property slopes from the road to the home. It's not going to have the appearance of a mounded system.
What about landscaping in front of it? Just something small.
Sure, I mean, I'm sure the applicant wouldn't mind proposing some sort of hedges. I'd have to take a look to make sure we don't hinder site visibility, but if there's concern that, and you want a row of small hedges in front of the, in front of the septic system, I don't believe the applicant would...
So what I can tell you is the Board of Health will usually opine on that, whether or not planting's proximity to a disposal field, so that might be something that they are not a mountain, you know. So the zone of disposal that's typically required is four feet, Mr. Wilder, right? Is there a means to reduce the zone of disposal to like two feet to eliminate having to raise the lot two and a half feet in front of the property?
We can certainly look at certain provisions such as doing pre-treatment. We're still going to be sloping up from the road to the house. So my testimony is, even if we had the ability to lower the mound, the grade where the septic system is, will be, is going to be at the same elevation I show on my plan, regardless of how we situate it, because again, I'm sloping up from the street to the property, and I don't want to have five feet or four feet of foundation exposed. The architect had prepared sort of a stone veneer for a portion of the front, and to me, if that breaks it up, the further you pull the house out of the ground.
You can keep going, Mr. Wilder.
One of the benefits of this property is you're in a flood zone, but sort of, right? So you have the benefit of overlooking the lake. You can't have a basement, certainly, but you're in a flood zone. But you don't have to come up that many feet from the street to still be fully compliant with FEMA. And again, as I indicated, the area in front is only two and a half feet above the edge of the road. That will be regardless of where, you know, if we move the septic system into the back, and I'm not certain we could do that because of the issue that we have to have 50 feet from the lake, another 15 feet to our crawl space, that would put the house in very close proximity to the front of the property. But even redesigning the septic system to an advanced pre-treatment system where we can sort of reduce the footprint and the separation, the grades are going to be similar to what I'm showing now, simply to sort of massage the grades from the road to the house.
So kind of along with, you know, with the septic system, right? One of the, and so there's the visual aspect of the septic system, right? Being elevated above the road, and then also like the potential grading impact to neighboring property. So you're basically creating a turtleback, and then you're pushing all the water off to the side. So, you know, on the northerly side property line, you know, they have some gradient that kind of delineates what would look like a swale going back to the lake. Along the southerly property line, you know, it's certainly hard to tell. There are some grades along the property line, but there's not a whole lot to the, on the neighbor's property, so that would be one of the concerns that I also have with the septic system being elevated above the road grade, is it pushing water onto the neighboring properties? You know, my comment about pre-treatment and reducing the zone of separation, that's one thing, right? You know, could the grading impact of the septic system also be lessened if the size of the footprint of the structure was a little bit smaller? You have more space to maybe move the septic system away from the property lines? That's also something that is a possibility.
And we can further accentuate a swale on the southern side of the property. Right now, we do have a little bit of separation between the edge of the driveway and the septic system. There's nothing really prohibiting us or preventing us from even putting a slight jog in the driveway to more center the septic system on the property. The further we move from the southern property line, the more we can accentuate a swale. The septic system where it's proposed now is generally at the high point of the site. So the front of the property really, where the septic system is now drains to the street, and everything else sort of drains to the lake as one might expect. So we're sort of mimicking those drainage patterns. The roof leaders will all be directed to the rear of the property, so they're going directly to the lake and not to any adjacent property owners. But we can certainly tweak this grading to accentuate a swale, to essentially eliminate any runoff being directed towards adjacent properties.
So, and then as a follow-up with the mounded septic system, right? So we, you said this site is in a flood hazard area. The FEMA mapping has it at 58. Adding three, so the flood hazard area elevation is 61. So the grade of the property along the Laurel Ave property frontage is 60.3, 60.7, 60.6, 60.6 per the property service. So the entirety of the property is in the flood hazard area, right?
That's correct.
So is there a zero net fill requirement applicable to this property?
There is, and there's provisions to get around that. So since the property won't have a basement, it'll be on a crawl space, the actual area under the home would qualify as that flood storage area. We also have the ability to cut in certain areas where, to offset filling in other areas. And then the last provision, if necessary, is the DEP has a mechanism for a hardship. The DEP is not typically in the business of condemning properties and completely removing their utility. In the, whether it was a one-bedroom house that was 800 square feet or a three-bedroom house at 2,400 square feet, the inclusion of a septic system would require some sort of elevation of the property. So I certainly acknowledge that we need certain outside agency approvals, but we determined that, understanding that this board has been specific with isolated undersized lots, we wanted to get this board's approval before pursuing a DEP permit that would then have to be modified and or changed.
So, and I'll say, I don't take exception to any of Mr. Wilder's testimony. You know, he put on the record that the property was created by subdivision. I think Ms. Robano provided a copy from my record of the Lake Louise development map, and what's on the tax map was plotted very, very long ago. So the existing lot itself has been there for a long time, right? So what we're really looking at is the proposed development on the property. A lot of the variance relief stems from the scale of the development, right? Size of the footprint, you know. So it's up to you to determine as board members whether you feel like you've heard the proper justifications. And I would just say, I want to add to that, as Mr. Wilder said, right? Any approval is subject to, right? So for outside agency. So just because they don't have a flood hazard area permit now doesn't mean that they can't obtain it. You can't deny or approve applications solely that they don't have that in hand. It's always has to be a condition of a potential approval. So you've heard Mr. Wilder put on the, on the record, should this board rule favorably on this application, they're going to have to get a flood hazard area permit, and they're going to ultimately determine whether zero net fill is applicable, whether there's a hardship as far as lot grading and things like that. I'll let Christine add if she's got any more planning comments.
No, I think Charlie summarized a lot of the environmental issues on the site that are kind of out of our control, but ultimately, what this board is choosing to act on one way or another is they require quite a bit of bulk variance relief, right? For the minimum lot area, front yard setback, side yard setback, on both the north and south sides, the rear yard setback.
Christine?
Yes.
Is there a reduction in the footprint that would remove some of those requirements?
So certainly, if the footprint was reduced, you could possibly reduce the required setback variances a little bit. Also, you know, right now, the building coverage, they're proposing 13.3%, where 10% is what's permitted. I don't know off the top of my head what square footage reduction that would be to meet that 10%, but since it is a small lot, I don't think it would be that many square feet, maybe.
If you remove the garage?
How, how many square feet is the garage? That's a question for the architect or the engineer, I think. But certainly, they could reduce the footprint of the structure to better comply with some of the bulk requirements.
The garage is approximately 423 square feet. That would bring the coverage down to 1331, which would bring the building coverage down to 10.0%.
So that would, if they got rid of the garage, they would comply with the building coverage, and that would also reduce the overall lot coverage slightly.
Yeah.
It would reduce the overall lot coverage to...
Potentially eliminate at least one on the side yard setback.
The architect has raised the issue, however, that our, our mechanicals are in the garage because there's no basement and there's no attic, or limited attic.
And that's in the newly submitted plans that we haven't seen?
Yes.
What was the original square footage of the house?
It's the same, it's 24, like 24, 50.
But if there was originally a basement and you're taking it out, how can it be the same square footage?
What is the first floor area on the new plans? Is it the same as...
It is 1326.
And I would note that the southern setback, which Mr. Cunliffe noted was 29 and a half feet in his letter, that is to the chimney. So it's not the entirety of the southern building or the southern wall. It's just to sort of the fireplace that's on that side, just for perspective.
Does other properties adjacent to or in the area have front yard septics?
So...
And are we, I mean, what about the other properties as far as, you know, all these different setback requirements? Are all these other properties in compliance? The properties are very small.
So I can't talk to the specifics of when those properties were built or anything like that. I can tell you that septic rules changed in the 80s, so things that were built, you know, 30, 40 years ago, there was a different set of regulations that applied to them at that time. For this subject application, the Board of Health did issue a memo that they would have to present a plan for their approval, showing all septic wells within 150 feet of the property. There's minimum separation distance, you know, to the building foundation if it's slab-on-grade or a basement. You know, 100 feet from a well to a septic disposal field. There's times when that can be reduced if the well is double-cased to a certain depth and things like that. That stuff usually falls under the purview of Board of Health. I pointed it out in my letter when we see things, and, you know, ultimately, it's under their jurisdiction. One of the things that, you know, I brought up was the disposal field to the, to the dwelling. Being that the basement's eliminated, the one comment about 25 foot required wouldn't apply, it's 15 foot when it's slab-on-grade. You have 10 foot to property line typically. But yeah, I mean, they're going to ultimately have to get Board of Health approval as a condition of any board action. And if Board Health doesn't issue permit for a septic system, then, you know, they're going to have to somehow find a way to get public sewer to the site, which I don't know where the closest public sewer is to the site.
And in any event, it's an expensive way to go.
Yeah, 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 so, I mean, ultimately, the septic is subject to Board of Health as a condition of any board action.
Okay.
And generally speaking...
Let's hear the planning side of it.
Sure. So we talked initially about the buy-sell letters that were issued. The relevant case that we're dealing with is the Dahlmeier case, which is the typical isolated undersized lot case. There's five criteria associated with the Dahlmeier case. So the first is to demonstrate that the efforts were made to bring the property into conformance. Those are the buy-sell letters. No adjacent properties want to buy or sell our property. The next is to submit detailed plans of the, of the home, demonstrating its appearance and that it will comply with the building code. Obviously, it certainly will comply with the building code. The plans that were submitted are what you're going to see, with the slight exception of there is no longer going to be a basement because we're in the flood hazard area. The next prong is to attempt to comply with the setbacks similar to other undersized lots. So what I'll point to the screen now is a lot adjacent to the, to the right. This is the adjacent dwelling. You can see how close it is to the property line. If you didn't mind flipping to the aerial exhibit. The homes that are in this area are in similar locations. The property to the right is, thank you, is right here. So you can see that the property to the right of that is directly in line. The property to the left is a little bit more setback, but irregularly shaped.
Which is the one that she also owns, the one to the left or the right?
27, which is the one to the right, right?
Okay.
To the right. Right, this one. Yeah. So, and the question may be, well, how do those lots have septic systems and they're not dealing with sort of the same constraints we are? The answer is they're dealing with septic systems that are 50 or 60 years old. The regulations were not what they are now. It's just the nature of the D. So we need to comply with the current regulations from the Board of Health for septic, from the DEP for flood hazard. So this is, this is not the easiest site. I'll be the first to admit that this site has some challenges associated with it. And what we tried to do is take a home that we thought fitted with the area and was sort of designed to be compatible with the area, but work within the confines of the constraints that we're dealing with. So as it relates to the, the required setbacks, to construct a home that would be fully conforming would be a home that really wouldn't meet current housing trends. So what we believe we propose is something that's appropriate. I don't believe it violates the typical purposes of planning such as light air or open space. We do have 21 feet on one side and 31 feet on the other side, with the exception of where that fireplace is located. We have a front yard setback that meet or exceeds all of the adjacent properties. And the rear yard setback is only for a small portion, if you don't mind flipping back to my plot plan. The, the plot plan, the variance plan?
A4.
A4, please.
It's what you have up there, John.
It's the very first tab. Yep. So the rear setback that we're talking about is this little piece. So all of this area of the home is compliant, with the exception of because of the lake, the shape of the lake, you have a small portion of the property that does violate the rear setback. So again, I, I think what is proposed is, is reasonable. The next prong is talking about the traditional purposes of planning, which I had already mentioned about light air and open space. You have adequate room around the property. I will indicate that we're not proposing any accessory uses or structures. We acknowledge the fact that we need variance relief for both building coverage and total lot coverage. So that's part of the reason the recreation room on the second floor is so important. That provides the storage that we need for the property in addition to a portion of the garage for rakes and lawn mowers and things of that nature. So we are not proposing those at this time because we're trying to be cognizant of the extent of the variance relief that we're requesting. And then the last prong is to deal with the variances, sort of in the, in the lens of the C2 or flexible variance criteria. I need to address the positive and negative criteria. When I look at the surrounding developed properties and what we're proposing, I don't see any real detriment. Mr. Cunliffe brings up some good points relative to grading and the location of the septic system, and we will ensure that we are not negatively impacting adjacent property owners. I believe there are several property owners who will get us to speak in support of this application based on the character of, of the applicant. And the last thing I would want to do is get them to come out and speak positively on the application and then detr, and then negatively impact them. So I, I don't believe there's a detriment, especially when you consider the much higher threshold or standard that we need to comply due to the new current standards with respect to flood hazard, Board of Health, septic, et cetera. And then when you look at the positive criteria, I think the home will be a beautiful addition to the area. You have a lot of homes in the area that are showing, some of them show their age, but when you drive through this part of town, one of the most unique aspects is there's no two homes that are identical. I live in Jackson myself, and you drive down certain homes in Jackson, every single house is a bi-level, every single house is a colonial. There's absolutely no variety. There's absolutely no variety to the streetscape. This part of town with the lake, you have a great variety, and I think this home will add to that. And that is goal I of the municipal land use law, which is to promote a desirable visual environment through good civic design and arrangement. And then the other goal is goal J, which is to provide sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of uses. This is a property in a residential zone surrounded by other residentially zoned properties. This is where a residential home should be built. So I believe that variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without impairing the intent or purpose of the zoning plan or zoning ordinance.
Okay. Christine?
Well, I agree with some of Mr. Wilder's testimony. This lot, you know, it is, it's certainly undersized for the zone district. And it does have, you know, constraints in terms of special flood hazard area.
It comes down to Monmouth County's DEP.
Right, but it comes down to the Board of Health and DEP for the flood hazard. I am slightly struggling with how the purposes of zoning are furthered kind of in terms of, you know, maybe the impacts on the neighboring properties with the septic proposed the way it is.
We're going to open it to public then?
Yeah.
Okay. Board members, any questions for the engineer slash planner? Okay, Mr. Ryan, you good?
I'm good.
All right, then, can we have a motion open to public?
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Eileen, we're going to open to public.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public who have questions or comments regarding this application. Please step up to the podium, be prepared to give your name and address, and be sworn in.
My name is Sharon Prese.
You can pull that down to you. It moves.
Sorry, ma'am?
Sharon Prese, D-E, oh, I'm sorry.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, the hell with you guys?
I agree.
State your name for the record, spell your last, and please provide your address as well.
Sharon Prese, P-R-E-S-S-E-Y, 9 Laurel Avenue, Howell, New Jersey. I've been in Howell 60 years. Laurel Avenue was a dirt road and so was Laurel Place. Okay, I just dated myself, all right? My backyard is Laurel Place, faces Mr. Bassett, Mrs. Bassett's property. Right now, I go out every morning and I look at the woods. That's not fun. I would love to go out my house in the morning, have a cup of coffee, and see a beautiful home. I think it would definitely add beauty to the neighborhood. I've been there and watched all these houses being built, and some of them are nice, some of them are mansions on the corner by the lake. And I'm not saying it's not nice, but I would like to go out, have a cup of coffee, and enjoy somebody's home across the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prese.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Please state your name for the record, spell your last, and provide your address.
You need to speak closer to that. Wait a minute, maybe it's not, it might not be on. It was on.
There's a button up there.
Right there?
Now it's on. Can you hear me now? Good evening. Linda DeRiso, D-E capital R-I-S-O. I resided 27 Laurel Place. I love it. I would love to have the, my neighbors have a new home next door. It would only add to the beauty of the neighborhood. I can't stress that enough. That would be most welcome.
Thank you.
Should I turn it off? Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else from public? Not seeing any?
Motion closed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eileen, we're closed.
At this time, the chairman has closed the public portion of this hearing.
Professionals? Any last minute comments?
The last member of public that spoke, 27 Laurel Place, is that, and this is for the applicant's counsel, is that the property that the Bassett's, Mr. and Mrs. Bassett also own? Okay, I just want to point that out for the board's record. Regarding the relief that's being sought, like, I think I put on the record about area, the lot in depth, those are things that can't be changed. All the other bulk stuff is generally relative to the scale of development. For me, with the septic system, you know, I was curious to whether the neighboring property to the south was going to come and have any questions because the septic system in the front there certainly is being, elevating the property and kind of grading towards their side property line. At the very least, I would want to see some kind of revised grading, more clearly defining a swell, because it looks like they've got like another driveway or gravel area along their property line. So we want to make sure that any runoff would get to the lake and not onto their property, especially since their house is somewhat close to the property line and there might be some other structures there. You know, like I said, with the mounding, there's certainly other ways to eliminate how much you need to raise the property. It requires additional pretreatment, which is additional cost. That's not necessarily something the board considers as part of any land use matter. So I'm just throwing that out there. Ultimately, it's up to the board whether or not you feel the applicant has met their burden and, you know, put the proper proofs on the record. I'll let Christine add on to it.
I will basically just reiterate some of what Charlie said. You know, the bulk requirements really speak to the intensity of the development, and those are things that regardless of the size, you know, can be met or what's proposed can be altered a bit. I think that the drainage concerns on the neighboring property to the south, while I'll let the expert really handle that, I am concerned just about the location in relationship to the neighboring property. So ultimately, it's up to the board whether they think the applicant has met their burden.
Okay. Mr. Wilder? You're going to recalculate the swell?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're certainly not trying to impact any neighbors.
You want to make sure we don't impact any neighbors?
Of course.
And then you're subject to all the approvals that are required at Monmouth County?
Correct. If something changes and we have to shift the house, we're going to be back before you guys.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, so Charlie reviews the adjusted swell before...
Yes.
Yes.
We would very likely, if this board is, if we're lucky enough to gain approval tonight, we would go to the state and go to the Board of Health, and then we would subsequently go back to Charlie for that review. I don't want to put the cart before the horse. This was the biggest hurdle in my eyes. So once we have this approval, we would go to those outside agencies and then come back to you guys or to Charlie's office with those approvals and the re-engineered plan with whatever changes we had to make hopefully just being the swell.
Okay. Sir, final summation?
I have nothing further. I just, this is one of those lots where we're coming in on a hardship application and there's a lot of hardship on this property. We've done what we can to deal with the problems. We've got a proximity with the water, which creates some extreme difficulty with the property, and I think we've done what we can to address that issue.
Okay, so then what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, Mr. Chair, with that one concern of the swell and obviously, I don't discuss that, that they're going to address that. And I'm familiar with building up the dirt in the front of the house, and I understand what they're saying because I have it at my house. So with all that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with all conditions. We got a second. Eileen?
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
I think this applicant is a victim of circumstance, but I think the house is going to be appropriate. I'm thankful that some of the neighbors came up, and I'll vote yes as well.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And Chairman Saya?
Yes.
Motion carries, application's approved.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Okay, we're going to hear Ms. Alfieri right now.
We'll see.
Oh, nice to meet you.
You're welcome. Ms. Alfieri?
Yes, sir.
We're waiting on one member. We don't have much time, sir.
Yes, we'll go as long as you tell us to go. 10 minutes? Whatever you want.
Okay, case number BA 24-06, Turkish American Religious Foundation, Inc., conditional use variance and preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary bulk variance relief. Application of the Turkish American Religious Foundation, Inc. as applicant and owner seeking approval for the conversion of an existing single-family dwelling to a place of worship with one caretaker residing on premises known as block 59.01, lots 48, 49, and 41.03 for Wendler Road. Exploration date, September 25th, 2024. Ms. Alfieri?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Salvatore Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant. Just a couple preliminary points. The house of worship is a conditional use, and one of the things that we put in the application was that we were going to use it for a house of worship and a caretaker's residence. The caretaker residence is not something we're asking for. It's going to be the parsonage residence, going to be the residence for the imam. So we believe that by changing that designation, the only relief we're going to need is the D3, the conditional use relief, not the D1 relief. But we'll defer to the planners when we get the planning testimony at some point. Number two is, the application as originally filed included three lots, 48, 49, and 41.03. 41.03 is a large lot adjacent to the lot where the house currently is located. There is no improvement proposed for that lot. It's just in common ownership. There's no merger to that with that lot because that lot is oversized. Your board professionals questioned why it was included in the application. It really has no purpose for this application. So really, we're going to focus only on lots 48, 49. 41.03 has no relevance to this application. Third point, and then I'll introduce our witness, is that this is an interim step for this religious organization. Their goal is to get the house approved for what's going to be a very, very minimal use for the congregation, and that at some point, when the congregation builds up, they're going to go and come back to this board and/or the planning board for lots 41.03, the lot that I just said we're going to exclude, to build a bigger facility. That would either come to the planning board, the zoning board, we haven't even analyzed that because that's further down the road. So this goal is to really get the congregation started at this location and ultimately keep the house as a parsonage house and build a new mosque at the larger lot. So just big picture, that's what our goal is in the future. But for tonight, we're focused on using this house as an interim location for the congregation. We figured we're only going to get one witness in, unless you guys have more, but, so we figured we should have operational testimony so you have better context as to what this application is about, what kind of intensity, et cetera.
Okay, one second. John, so we've issued any summonses on this?
Nope. I believe there were some property maintenance issues quite some time. The only thing that I would add is if the, depending on how long and whether it gets approved or not, between the time of approval and the time that it, construction goes underway, if the structure remains vacant for quite some time, we do have a vacant property ordinance that we would ask that you adhere to, requires registration until such time that permits are taken out. Certainly contact my office and I'll walk you through that. I've driven by this property several times and did note that since its sale or since the start of this, it has sat vacant. So we just look for a point of contact, yep, and registration.
We'll do that between now and whenever we have to come back.
All right, let's hear your first witness.
Okay, first get standing. Do you affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your name for the record, spell your last.
Sadik H. Sadik. It's S-A-D-I-K. Initial H, S-A-D-I-K.
And Mr. Sadik, what is, stay close to the microphone.
And did you, did you, okay, you're good, go ahead.
What is your affiliation with this property?
I'm the president of this location of Tarf Turkish American Religious Foundation.
Right, and you're, you will be in charge of the operation of the facility if it's approved?
Yes.
Now, you heard me say at the beginning that this will not be a caretaker residence, residence for the portion of the property. It will actually be the imam's residence, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and the imam will be a full-time resident in this facility if it's approved?
Yes.
Okay, and can you tell the board about the proposed activities that would occur in terms of the house of worship? For example, when would services be conducted?
It will be on Friday, noon time, for a few hours, two, three hours, and Sunday mornings about from 10 to 1:00. And also, we have a religious month of Ramadan. We like to use it if we can. And we have two big holidays during the year. I like to use it two hours in the morning times.
So, and then in terms of the number of congregants, how many congregants do you currently have?
Right now, we don't have too many, about 12 or 14.
And the application we submitted said that you would have up to 28 at this facility, is that correct? Once you build the congregation?
God willing, yes.
Right, but you, and you understand that as, if this board were to approve the application, you cannot exceed the 28 because everything is designed to a max of 28 congregants.
Right.
Now, let's dig a little deeper into what you said about these various activities. The first one is the Friday afternoon activity, that's a prayer service.
Prayer, yeah, prayer services.
And that would be, that would be up to the 28 if you ever get to that number. But right now, it's six to 10 or 12 people.
Right.
And that's every Friday?
Yes.
And then the Sunday, what type of activity is that?
It's usually for the kids to get together, to get to know each other, and hopefully we'll build a bigger congregation in the future.
And then on Ramadan?
And that's limited as well, you know, it's a few hours.
And then Ramadan, that's a daily prayer?
I mean, not really, but people can stop by to talk to the imam in case if they have any spiritual or religious questions.
And that's on the Ramadan holidays?
Month of Ramadan, yeah.
And that's, that would only be daytime activity?
Yes.
And then what about the two holidays? Is that also daytime?
Daytime, in the mornings.
Now, the other days of the week, because right now, essentially, other than the special events, the holidays and Ramadan, you've only talked about Sunday and Friday.
Yes.
There were also, there was also an opportunity where if a congregant wants to come and pray with the imam during the week, he can, he or she can, correct?
Yes.
So it's not as if it's going to be closed down all week, it's just going to be very limited activity.
But there's not going to be scheduled congregations, you know, gatherings, I should say.
So just if they want to come see you?
If they want to stop by.
On an informal basis then?
Right.
All right, now, will there be any outdoor activities at this location?
No.
No outdoor activity? All right, garbage. You only expect to generate essentially household waste, is that correct?
Just the residential. There won't be any serving to the public there. It won't be used for that purpose.
So in terms of garbage, your proposal is to have a regular garbage can that a normal house would have that would be taken to the street for pickup? The next question relates to the kitchen. There's a kitchen on the, in the property. That kitchen will not be used by... That kitchen will not be used by the congregation at any time?
No, not for the iman.
Only for the iman?
Only for the iman, yes.
So there'll be no food prep or no service?
No food prep.
Food service to the congregants?
Right.
There's a proposal in the application where you had an illuminated sign. You want to eliminate the illumination request and just have a regular sign, is that correct?
Yes.
And the engineer, we'll get into that more detail.
Yes.
In terms of parking, you, once the engineer testifies, you're comfortable, there'll be adequate parking to handle the congregation as, as it grows up to the max of 28.
Right, 28, yes.
Okay, and I think that's all, Mr. Chair, for operations, unless you or the professionals have questions.
Yeah, so if you could just maybe talk us through a little bit, because the way the architectural plans were laid out, at least, it looks kind of like the congregation services or prayers are happening where the iman lives. There's really no separation. Is there any private space for that person, or how does that work?
Yeah, it has a, it has a smaller...
Buck in the mic?
It has a smaller room as well.
That I think is labeled as prayer room on the plans.
Or ladies, yeah. But they don't participate in weekly prayers. It's usually, like Fridays, it's only for men.
And in that, in the, in the room where the iman is going to sleep, you are proposing to have a couch that opens, it's not going to be a typical bedroom, it's a couch that opens up.
Right.
So that room is dual purpose, it's going to be used for prayer or where he sleeps? Is that what the intent is? I, go ahead, Christine, sorry.
Okay, so...
But it's, most likely, it's not going to be used for prayers because ladies don't count for Friday prayers. So it's probably, it's going to be for him.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, so Ms. Alfieri?
Yes, sir.
You know, we're bucking up against the clock. You know, can we reschedule to get this as the first application in the future?
Yes, we have...
Now that we have originally accepted this application and we're discussing it. So before we do that though, so we have a smaller congregation that's going to grow into a larger congregation, right? And so then the question will be, you know, as you grow, the more people you have, the restrooms have to be accommodating for larger gatherings, right? And then parking, right? And other things which the engineer will eventually go through. But, yeah, can we, can we look at maybe rescheduling, Eileen? Do you have a...
Do you want to try for August 12th? There's three applications scheduled, but one was carried, two, and the other two are brand new, haven't been touched yet. After that, August 26th has three applications. One was carried, the other two are brand new. September 9th has two applications. September 23rd has two applications.
August 12th.
Wait, let me just, my schedule's as bad as yours, so let me just, I apologize. Let me figure that out.
Yes, you're going to be first.
As long as our team can do.
I'm not, but I think that is...
Ocean time, isn't it?
It's not on, it's not on his calendar.
August 12th, good with you? That's fine, and August 12th will be perfect.
Eileen, they'll be first up, okay?
Okay, perfect.
All right, thank you.
I'd ask for you to ask that Mr. Bear or the board chair announce the night without the need for further notice, please.
Okay, so this application, BA-24-06, Turkish American Religious Foundation, Inc., this application is being carried to August 12th, 2024, without any further notification. An expiration date remains the same, September 25th, 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, Eileen.
Okay, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned, Eileen.
Thank you.
Okay.